Well, good morning, everyone. I guess everyone's anxious to get this meeting underway. It was suddenly very quiet in here, so that's great. Today is a beautiful fall day. It's Tuesday, October 21st, 2025, and we're here for the Board of Supervisors regularly scheduled meeting. Our first order of business, of course, is to call to order and greetings from my colleagues. My name is Patrice Horstman. I am the supervisor from District One and current Chair of the Governing Board. District Two.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Heronimo Vasquez. I'm supervisor for District Two and current Vice Chair. Thank you for being here.
District Three.
Good morning, everyone. Tammy Ontiveras, District Three.
District Four.
Good morning, everyone. Julie Begay, District Four Supervisor.
And District Five.
Yeah, good morning. Lena Fowler. It was a beautiful drive. I took a photo. Maybe I need to send it to Melissa so she can share the view from the north side of the peaks. So it's really great. It has a belt. We say that in the fall, our, the peaks is one of the sacred peaks and that forms a belt, has a belt around its waist. So anyway, just really showed it really well. All right. We're gonna have a wonderful day today.
Our next order of business is to honor our country. For those that can, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, and next we have call to the public. And for those that are here today and those that may be online for our board meeting, this is the time where you, members of the public, have an opportunity to address matters of concerns or comments that you would like to make to the Governing Board. Now, these are items that are, of course, not on the agenda. So for those items not on the agenda, you have up to three minutes to address the board. Because they are not on the agenda, the Arizona Open Meeting Law does not allow us to engage in discussion or conversation or any kind of action on those items. But you can provide them to us. We can provide them to our administration for follow-up or for a follow-up board meeting. So now is the time. You have three minutes. And because this is a public meeting, we ask that you remain civil and professional in your comments. So I'm going to turn this over to our clerk, Lindsay Daly, so she can explain how you can join us for the call to the public.
Thank you, Chair Horstman. At this time, if there is anyone that would like to make a comment, we have comment cards on the table by the door if you would like to fill that out. If you're watching our YouTube stream, you can email us at boardcomments@coconino.az.gov and we can read the comment for you. Also, there's not many people here in the room, so you can also make your way up to the podium. But we do, at this time, have one comment card already. Colleen Maring, if you could just please state your name for our minutes. We've got the clock on three minutes, so it'll count down.
Thank you and good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Supervisors. My name is Colleen Maring. I'm the Chief People Officer at Northern Arizona Healthcare. And for the past two years, we've been committed to listening to the community and sharing information about Northern Arizona healthcare more directly and in a more personal way with the residents of Northern Arizona. And as a part of that effort, we want to continue to listen and be present and hear from you and exchange information with you. And so we want to come here. We know you represent all of the residents of Coconino County, who are many of our patients and our community members and the people we serve. So we value this time to share information with you and invite you to further discussion, which is why I'm here today. In August, we invited you to hear about our new 2030 strategic plan, and we really appreciated those who were able to attend that meeting. And at that meeting, we announced we'd be holding listening sessions this fall. And this next round of listening sessions is about what our community wants to see happen at the current Flagstaff Medical Center campus if we relocate the hospital to a new location. Pleased to announce that we have dates for those forums, and we want to invite all of you supervisors, as well as all of your constituents, to come and participate. The two events, one is October 29th at noon, and then the second is October 30th at 6:00 PM, both in the McGee Auditorium at Flagstaff Medical Center. And during these sessions, we'll provide information on how we intend to make a recommendation to our Board of Directors by the end of the year on a potential move to another location in order to build a modern facility to serve the entire region, all of Northern Arizona, for the next 50 years. We heard loud and clear in 2013 that one reason people didn't support the plan at that time was that we couldn't say what we would do with the FMC property after we moved. So back in 2013, we said, hey, we'll invite you to discuss and listen, and we'll make a plan after we have our plan to relocate solidified. And that wasn't what our community wanted. So we're doing it in the opposite order. So we do not have a, we do not have a new site. We do not have a date we're moving. We don't know where we're moving. But if we move, then we need a plan for what we do with FMC's current campus. And so that's what we're starting the process of at these first two listening sessions, hearing what the community wants to see. We've had two forums so far for our colleagues to participate in. They are also a part of our community and your constituents. They've shared their ideas with us. That will inform some of what we discuss at the public forum. But we're really just looking forward to more ideas, more feedback, so that we can vision and plan together. So with that, supervisors and public, please join us October 29th at noon, October 30th at 6:00 PM in McGee Auditorium at Flagstaff Medical Center. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, and we'll be sure to get the word out. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Any other call to the public?
We do not have any other comment cards. So if there's anyone else in the room here that would like to make their way up to the podium for public comment, we will provide three minutes for you to speak. And again, if you're watching our YouTube stream, you can email your comment to boardcomments@coconino.az.gov.
Now is the time, members of the public.
Chair Horstman, we do not have any other comments.
All right. Well, we're moving on. We really appreciate NIH being with us this morning and providing us important information. So we're going to move on with our agenda. Members of the board, members of the public, next is the consent agenda. And the consent agenda are items that are more ministerial or administrative in nature. These are items that can be handled through one motion and one vote by the public or by the board. And these are not open for individual discussion. So we, the board, have an opportunity to remove an item for individual discussion, whereupon there would also be an individual vote. So today, we have items one through seven on the consent agenda. And I'm going to ask my colleagues if they would like to separate any of these items. Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to separate item number two and item number three.
Item two and three will be separated. Any other items to separate? All right, then with the exception of two and three, do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as set forth in our agenda?
So move.
Have a motion by Supervisor Ontiveras. Do you have a second? A second by Supervisor Begay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. We have passed our consent agenda. Now, number two is consideration and possible action to approve a funding with the, I'm going to ask you to pronounce it because I'm going to mispronounce it. There you go. In partnership with the Museum of Northern Arizona, to provide a total of $1,300 from community initiative funds, District One, 500; District Two, 540; District Five, 260, in support of the 22nd Annual... Very good. Thank you very much. A two-day celebration focusing on the Hispanic cultural traditions of celebrating Dia de los Muertos, Day of the Dead. Funny will be specifically support decorations, flowers, and musicians who will perform and provide several workshops about the significance of the event, traditions, and celebrations. And I can't pronounce it, but I've been there, done it, and it's marvelous. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes, thank you. This is a great opportunity to come celebrate with our Nuestras Raíces and all the old families of Flagstaff who come and remember some of our pioneers in our community. And so it's really exciting to have this year, Saturday and Sunday of this week. So I definitely recommend. It's all day Saturday and more or less half-day on Sunday. And it'll be a lot of fun. If you get there at 10 o'clock, I'm planning to emcee Lotteria, so come have some fun with us.
I'm going to take Spanish lessons there, I think, so.
And with that, I would love to invite Nuestras Raíces up to the front.
Teresa, it is so great to see you. I want to welcome you back. I mean, you have been an institution and certainly a builder of who we are here in Coconino County. So, so great to see you. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you. It's good to be home. As a member of Nuestras Raíces for 25 years and doing the Dia de los Muertos for at least as long. We've done it 22 years with the museum and three years on our own previously. And so it's just, it's a way of us to share our culture and traditions with the community, and we invite everybody to come. We do have Lotteria in the courtyard. We have the altars of what we call ofrendas, which is a way that we honor our loved ones that have passed before us. Because with the Dia de los Muertos, we truly believe that they come back to celebrate with us. And so it's a way to enjoy the music, the food, and it's a beautiful way of healing and celebrating, you know, where our heritage came from and our ancestors and how we became who we are. And so it's, we have T-shirts every year. This is a, I don't even remember what year this is from, but every year we have a new T-shirt that's out there. And we have a lot of fun. We do do sugar skull. Actually, this year, we're doing five sugar skull workshops where we're providing the sugar skull and all the materials to decorate them, which we decorate them as to represent one of our loved ones that has passed. Very popular. We started out with doing two, and they were always way overbooked. We're having five, and they're all sold out. But it's just, it's a way of sharing. If you come, I'll make sure you have one.
I'll be there. Save me one.
I'll make extras tonight, so we have some extras. But it's a beautiful way of us to share. And of course, without your support and your consideration of helping us do this every year, we probably wouldn't be able to do it in a way that we like. And we truly appreciate from the bottom of our hearts all your, all your support over the many years. And we'd love to see you there and come by. I have an ofrenda, too. I'll be there. So just come by and say hi. We'd love to have you. And it's, if you've never celebrated it, ask anybody who's there, and we'll tell you about the tradition and the history of Dia de los Muertos. But thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Great to see you. Just for a historical note, Teresa was district director for Liz Archuleta for a long, long time. I believe the full 25 years. And then was my district director my first year. And so it's great to see her. Thank you for being here. Thank you for eloquently describing the event. And just, you know, Dia de los Muertos is an opportunity to celebrate with those that have passed on. It's really a date. You sit down, you break bread, you have a party, and their essence is there with you. And so that's what that represents. And so I appreciate everybody contributing to the event. And please spread the word because it's a beautiful event, and it's one of the hallmarks and keystone events for Nuestras Raíces. So we need to support them. With that, can I get a motion to approve the CI?
You're calling the motion now, too. I tell you what, I'll call the motion. You make it.
There you go.
All right. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Oh, you made the motion. We have a motion and a second by Supervisor Ontiveras. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, and it's going to be a great event. We'll see you there. Is there an agenda and time on when things? I know there's going to be dancing and music and... That would be great. That'd be fabulous. So it's, yeah, it's 10 to 5. I was getting, thank you.
It's 10 to 5 on Saturday, and then in the evening, from 6 to 8, they open it again. In the courtyard, there'll be mariachis. It is, to me, probably one of my favorite times because we do always have the candles lit, because the candles signify the spirit of the people that are coming with us. And so the courtyard is filled with candles, and every table has all the candles. And it's night, and the music, and they have the pan dulces, and they have, you know, they usually have tamales or menudo. And it is just, the whole museum is not open. It's only in the courtyard. So it truly, to me, it's magical. And so, and then Sunday, it goes again from 10 until about 4:30 with some of the events. And between 4:30 and 5, we do the closing blessing, where we go through and bless each individual ofrenda and the museum as a whole and say goodbye.
Thank you very much. So I look forward to being there. Do save me a sugar skull.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, I will.
We'll see you there. Thank you so much for being here. All right, we have number three, and this is Supervisor Vasquez asked to pull this as well. This is consideration and possible action to approve a budget transfer in the amount of $1,570, 400 from District One, 456 from District Two, 400 from District Four, and 314 from District Five, from community initiative funds to the Coconino County Indigenous Peoples Advisory Council account to support the Voices Unheard event to discuss stalking, harassment, intimidation, and domestic violence as possible precursors to the missing and murdered indigenous relative. Funds will be used towards the venue cost and audiovisual equipment. And I will turn this to Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes, thank you. Just trying to support some community efforts by IPAC and the Indigenous Council from the City of Flagstaff. And with that, I'm sure my colleagues could speak more eloquently about it. But it's just important that we're recognizing and talking about stories of people who are forgotten and giving them voices. Last night, I had the opportunity to attend a filming at the CCA where they talked about a case that happened here in Flagstaff 40 years ago. And these stories are powerful, and they need to be heard, and they need to help shape our justice system. And so with that, I'd like to invite Ms. Rose Tohe up to talk a little bit about the event. Because there's more than just last night.
No, it's really huge, so.
Thank you. Chair and Vice Chair and the rest of the Board of Supervisors, if you have been, that's good morning. And then my name is Rose Tohe, and I also sit on IPAC, representing District Four. And also am a employee at City of Flagstaff. Sorry. Haven't had a full cup of coffee yet. And I have with me here our Vice Chair from IPAC as well. And I just want to say thank you for giving us some funds to cover the venue at the Center for the, Coconino Center for the Arts. And one of the things that I think is really important, since this is also Domestic Violence Month, is just to shine light on some things that are happening here in our community. And although we feel very safe, we also have some situations where we come across that aren't safe. People, our people are going through, and this is not just indigenous people. This is people from every walk of life who, who deserve some, some education and ways to reach out when they feel like they can't, or they, maybe they feel embarrassed or whatever it might be that they get, that they be surrounded by the resources they need so that they can, they can reach out to somebody. So the way that I think about it is that, you know, there's, there's normal life here. Everything's going well. You're supported and whatnot. And then there's the murdered indigenous relatives portion. So in between there, there's prevention and resources. There needs to be. And then there's the justice system, public safety, police, sheriffs, whatever it may be that, that people are not tapping into when they really do need to. So it's just that we have, we're going to have a story. This will be on Wednesday, on the 22nd, at Coconino Center for the Arts. And we're going to have a speaker that has lived experience in our community, who brought this forward and wants to just share the educational component of being aware and for the community to be aware, those people who might be going through the same things that she's, that she's gone through. And then, and then we're going to also have Lynette Grable. She's with Not Our Native Daughters organization. She's going to be our keynote speaker, as well as Savannah Sanders from Applejack Ranch. So those are some things. And then our own deputy, Bethany Hyde, will also speak. And then we also have Taisha Wood, who's also been a Navajo investigator, who's also going to bring some light to the situation. So if you can all come, tonight, we're having a filming at 5:30 at, also at Center for the Arts. And that will be She Cried That Day. So if you can come out, that'll be very, very helpful and very informational. But I just want to say thank you for just overall the leadership support, but also support from our Chair and our Vice Chair of IPAC, as well as the rest of the community who's here. And thank you to Martin and Brian over there. Brian, Brian and Martin have been so helpful in holding our hands through this whole process, and I really appreciate it. And I just want to say, first of all, just heartfelt thanks to Supervisor Vasquez because I think that you have touched our hearts in the generosity that you've brought forward. And then just leading people in with you when it came to this. Thank you.
You know, Rose, we really always appreciate your outreach and your advocacy on behalf of so many folks here in Coconino County. And, you know, it's, we can, you know, always rely on you for information, for courage, for just, you know, being there and being such a strong, strong advocate in our community. So we want to thank you so much for everything you do. And I know you didn't introduce your chair.
So, honey, my name is Julie Roddy. I'm of the Ojibwe tribe in Michigan. I'm the Vice Chair. Our Chair, that's all right. Our Chair is Linda, I have chaired before, but our Chair is Linda Curly. So both Linda and I, of course, support all of Rose's endeavors. And IPAC is just a very vibrant organization. We appreciate the Board of Supervisors and all the support that they've provided us in the past for this event and all the other things that we've done. We do our best to represent our people in the community, and this is one of those things, very important, one of those things. So, thank you.
Thank you for joining us as well. And, you know, the missing and murdered indigenous women, you know, unfortunately, is something that is here at a disproportionate rate in this country. You know, I think last I read, there was over 6,000 last year alone. And it's such a heartbreaking tragedy. I think it is so important we bring this to light. You know, it is an inequity and an injustice that it goes even beyond the heartbreak of domestic violence. And you're, as you're right, this is Domestic Violence Month. And, you know, we need to be loud, strong out there and speaking up for the women and children and those that are victims of domestic abuse and violence. And certainly, we really appreciate this wonderful opportunity to take part and learn and join and community on this with these wonderful programming and movies you're putting on. So thank you so much, as always. Really appreciate that. And, you know, I can tell you that those of us here on the board are very pleased that we can partner with you in this. I want you to know. It's very meaningful for us. So thank you for that opportunity. Any other comments, members of the board, before we take a motion? Yes. Supervisor Breguet.
Thank you. Yeah, Rose and Ms. Roddy, thank you for bringing, being here with us. And I just feel that, you know, we, as all of us, somewhere we need to be, we need to all do our part. During the parade, I had a chance to get the mic twice with Western Navajo Fair, and I really spoke to this about the missing and murdered indigenous relatives. So I think, you know, things like that mean a lot. And yes, you know, we, this is something that we need to all be together on and to ensure that, you know, people are safe out there. So I've been talking to some of the students at the high school, girls, that I see like in bunches, you know. I said, how do you guys protect yourself, you know, from anybody snatching you or whatever? And they said, nothing. We just kind of hang together. I said, well, don't be walking by yourself, don't be driving by yourself, don't let anybody, don't open the doors, keep your doors locked. And then on top of that, I told them, get a mace. Start getting mace and keep that on you at all times. So, you know, things like that is something that we need to convey to our people out there because this is real. And the numbers have been going up from previous years, you know, and so 6,000 last year, that's a lot of people. And it's not only women, it's men also. We have a lot of the people, men that are missing. So thank you so much. And I know this is a heartfelt, you know, topic, and it hurts to see things like this, like in the newspapers. You know, so I just want to say thank you for all you do. And I thank the Board here, we try to support in every way, shape, or form, you know, to help our people out there with issues that come at hand. So thank you so much.
Any other comments, questions? Supervisor Antiveras.
Well, just briefly, I just wanted to thank you guys this morning for being here and for the work you do and for the Board. And I do see Rose kind of motioning that we have someone that would like to talk. I'm just going to throw that back to the Chair for her direction, but thank you guys for being here and the work you do.
Cheryl, just how you joined us, please, if you wouldn't mind. Thank you for being with us this morning.
Thank you so much, Supervisors. I appreciate it. I was trying to find parking and there's no parking. And I forgot to pay for the parking that I have to pay for, so I'm like, oh my God, I don't know which way to go. Gee, you guys make it complicated, but I am here. And maybe that's just the story of life, things get complicated and we have to still fight to get here and move forward. I'm not sure exactly what was expressed this morning and to talk about our event that with the support of the County, Coquigno County Supervisors, we would very much be thankful and grateful for your support in supporting this event called Voices Unheard, Breaking the Silence. It is a prevention, education, and awareness event. So important. I really don't like saying it's a first of its kind, or, you know, people always say, oh, it's this, it's a first. We wanted it to be a gathering as far as a grassroots effort, because it's so difficult to find all these services, October being, Domestic Violence Month, that how this story came into place was, I'm a part of a case. And this case involved a situation where when I needed help, I didn't know where to go, and there was nobody there to help me. I went to leadership, I went to tribal leadership, I went to anybody that could help me figure out what to do. And it was so hard. And in my level of experience with connections with people I know, there was nobody, there was nothing that gave me a resource. Luckily, my first connection was through a person I knew who was a lawyer, and I told him what had happened, and he says, you need to get a lawyer. It went that direction first. But over time, when I was getting with the protection, I got an order of protection, I went forward. There was more to the story, and it involved Northern Arizona, and it involved women from my tribe. But then I started seeing a pattern of other women from tribes in the state of Arizona. The case ended up getting reported, a police report was done here in Flagstaff last year. And I had to advocate for myself every two weeks to every month, calling the officer, what's the status, where is it at, where is it going? Nothing. Oh, we're still waiting to hear from the county attorney. We're still waiting to hear from the county attorney. It wouldn't be till months later when I finally, in March or April, May, Rose was the person that really advocated for me to go to meet the, he was leaving, Chief Muslim, former Chief of Police. His last week he was here, I think it was like two days before he was leaving, to tell him the story. And he said, well, anybody get back to you. I said, have you been assigned a detective? Nothing, nobody. Why not? I don't know, I'm still waiting for the police department, the police officer. And then he finds out that the young police officer actually was supposed to go to the city attorney, not the county attorney. There were so many misdirections, it just was, it was comical. Like, I had to have laughter in this because I couldn't believe how many obstacles and challenges. There was no communication, nobody knew this and nobody. And maybe my case wasn't as important, you know. I've worked in the news business for many years, I'm a videographer, I own my own video production company. And the saying is, if it bleeds, it leads. So maybe unless it's so damaging enough, that's more important than trying to figure out what this was. So this individual, it turned out, on record, he targeted and preyed on specific vulnerable populations. And that's a whole nother story, not what my case is about. But because this advocacy was going throughout the whole year, and finally meeting the new Chief of Police, and he got on it within two weeks, and I got the detective in it involved, but even to the very end in December last year, paperwork wasn't being followed through. It sat on the desk of the city attorney because he didn't see it. It was just so frustrating. And talking with Rose, she said, what do you want to do about it? I don't know, but some people need to know something. I wish somebody told me about it. I wish somebody had helped me. Where are all these MMIR organizations, missing and murdered indigenous relatives? I called them. A lot of them, within their systems, their organizations, they do not have portion from their budget, prevention, education. They're not designed that way. They're designed for after the fact, a woman is murdered, killed, and kidnapped. Frustrating, like, what do we do? And then I see these parades, and I see these ribbon skirts, and I see these stories of people. What about preventing actually, before any of that happens? Why are our people behaving this way or getting involved? Or what are the terms of our communities, the trauma, the historical trauma, and what has happened, our economics that's creating this ripple effect? So Rose and I, we reached out to people to have a little meeting, a little Zoom meeting, to express, we should do something. And that's what we did. We started off with four individuals that just stuck around, and we kept talking about our own personal stories. Eventually, we're down to three. So this effort is actually put together by a three-person grassroots group. And through our connections, myself, Rose Tohe, Indigenous Administrator for the City of Flagstaff, and Virginia Watahamaji, Coquigno Coalition for Children and Youth, just through our resources and connections, we put this out. And luckily, because I'm in District Two with Supervisor Vasquez, we needed a venue, and that kept complicating, just trying to find a place. It was so hard. And Coquigno Coalition, Coquigno Center for the Arts came up, and that's when I reached out. And I said, Hieronimo, I need help, like, we need help just to get this pulled off. And there were so many obstacles that made us want to quit, or you should quit, and that's not me. If anybody knows me, I have this tenacity to keep getting it done. And I really want to appreciate that and say that on behalf of myself and the ladies in this committee, it's important that we start doing this, even if it starts small. Last night, we had our first, prior to our Wednesday, tomorrow, big event from 8:30 to 3:30, we're having film screenings, films pertinent to this topic, MMIR, with the filmmakers present. Last night, we had Ramona Emerson present, and they're both coming from Albuquerque, taking their time, coming all this way to showcase their films, talking about MMIR, talking about this subject, leading up to Wednesday, in which we'll have this great lineup of other keynote speakers, Lynette Grable, subject matter expert in MMIR. We're going to have Savannah Sanders from Applejack Ranches out of Prescott. Lynette was kidnapped, that's her live story. Savannah was trafficked, that's her story. In the afternoon, we have two female police detectives, one who is Navajo and one who's Cherokee. Taisha Wood, she lives in the Phoenix area, and of course, we have Detective Bethany Hyde, who was the detective on my case. I am so happy that she was assigned to me and the fact that she is a citizen of, tribal citizen of the Cherokee Nation. So she knew MMIR, and she knew why, when I was telling her about who this person was. She took it seriously. She had, it was black and white, so I'm wondering if the officers and people, they just don't know the stories enough about this subject. But she understood, and she made an effort. When she did her case and her research, she went all the way. I really want to express that this isn't just a brown issue. It's white and brown, it's all colors. We live in a city where we have two major freeways, I-40, I-17, and when things go dark at night, bad things happen around here, we just don't see it a lot of the time. So I think it's important that the whole community understands that. Savannah Sanders is not tribal, and she was trafficked. Last night, when we had the filming, there was some great ideas that came up, just from this small group that attended, who took the time out of their evening to show up. We have interest that, if we have this again next year, and I'm like, can we just get through this one, you know? There was groups, there's other people from indigenous populations that are experts, and they want to share their stories. In Mexico, the indigenous women who are missing and murdered there, the Hopi, there was one tribal Hopi representative last night that showed up from the tribal, now Hopi Tribe, Hopi Council. And he was so interested, because when I was telling him what I went through in my case, he says, that's what's happening with us. I know it, I work in this field. He would like to showcase things that happened in Hopi. So if this is an effort to move forward, to connect these groups, we have all these other populations that should be highlighted as well. And that's what I think this kind of event can do. So for now, I really invite everybody here, and anybody who's listening in the audience, to please go to the website, Elevate, E-L-E-V-eight, and the number eight, voices, V-O-I-C-E-S dot info. That's the website to learn about this event and to register. And I really, again, appreciate you taking the time to listen to me, for allowing me to speak. And if you have any other questions, reach out, you know, how to find me, literally. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Cheryl. We really appreciate you joining us, even with all the obstacles we threw in your way. And, you know, of course, I know you to be a very strong and mighty woman, and I really appreciate you sharing your story, because I think it's important for people to understand, this could happen to anybody. And I also appreciate you taking that in something that was so hard in your life, and turning it into advocacy for others. And, you know, that's kind of what we all should be about when we talk about community. So thank you so much. Supervisor Fowler.
Yes, thank you. Yes, you've become a community educator advocate, and so you have to be really strong to get, to be able to do that. So thank you so much. This is a historical trauma that, from the time that, you know, we have, we have histories of stories within our own history and native history, that where native people have been taken, and all of the trauma that has gone, that has happened throughout history. It's been really difficult, and I really believe that now, you know, now it's really important that this education is happening, and really need to have more events like this. So I want to thank the, your organizations and others that are very much involved in putting an organization and an event of education like this. And we've all, I think, in the communities, I know in our, on Navajo, we keep getting these text messages of people that are missing. We get them every single day. And it's really sad to receive these messages to say that people are missing. And it's not just women, it's also children. So we need to get this information out. And it's happening throughout the, throughout the country, on and off tribal lands, and just really need to get that education out. So thank you so much for having this educational event that we're all involved in, and really happy that's happening. And I like to see more of it throughout the country. And I think it's a movement that is really getting that education out. So thank you so much.
All right, have we voted? We have not voted? Okay. You know, it's been a while, but this is a very good discussion, so thank you. So at this point, I would entertain a motion for us to approve item number three. Do I have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion. Who, I'm sorry, Supervisor Breguet? Okay, I'm having a hard time hearing you on your mic. So just for the, that's, so moved. Well, that explains it. Why would we turn it on? All right, sorry, we have a motion and we, from Supervisor Breguet, do we have a second? We have a second by Supervisor Fowler. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and even members of the public eye and that. So we really appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you for being here today, and really look forward to participating in some of the events. So, thank you. All right, we're moving on. Members of the Board, we have more consent agendas to come, but wearing different hats. At this time, I would ask for a motion to resolve as the Health District Board of Directors.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those say aye if you would like to resolve as the Health District Board of Directors.
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. All five have voted. So we are now the Public Health District Board of Directors. Directors, we have a consent agenda, number eight. It's consideration and possible action to approve some contracts, as more fully said, forth in our agenda. Do as anyone want to remove this from the consent agenda? And if not, I would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda. Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion from Supervisor Antiveras to accept the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Vasquez. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 It is unanimous and passed. Members of the Board, we now must resolve back as the Board of Supervisors. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Supervisor Breguet. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are now the Board of Supervisors. Members of the Board, we have a discussion item. This is Presentation, Discussion, and Direction regarding preparation for the County Supervisors Association, CSA, Annual Legal Legislative Summit, which I know we're all going to, including review and discussion of our legislative proposals. This is for Government Affairs, but first, we're going to go to Eric Peterson, our Deputy County Manager. Eric, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Board, Deputy County Manager Eric Peterson. I'm pleased to be here today, and my colleagues in Government Affairs will lead us through most of our binder. But on your desks, you have the binder for the summit that has been prepared by the Government Affairs Office. I want to just preface a few of our comments today. We have worked hard over the last couple of weeks, let's switch with Lindsay and go this way, the last couple of weeks with the lobbyists of the various counties and also CSA, also through the Managers Association, to go through the items, understand the intent of other counties, and then also to understand sort of the impact that taking up certain legislation would have for CSA, the volume that CSA could handle, but also then the items that are presented, what challenges or opportunities they might present, both for counties for counties writ large and also for Coconino County, as we've done this work. And so as we talk today, we're going to go through each item, but we want to recognize that we have given you a recommendation on what we believe the board should do, support or oppose, or if we're neutral on an item. Certainly, you are welcome to change these recommendations, as part of the questions we will ask on each of them, if you want to change sort of a county position on any of them, if we want to talk about them more in depth as we go through them, but also have prepared talking points, and have sort of recommended a lead speaker from across U5 over items that are ours or from other counties that impact Coconino, that we believe we should comment on. So I want to provide that information, and also just a little bit of organization to help you. If you would, just turn to tab seven, let's go tab eight, just to make it easy. You turn to tab eight, you'll see that you have golden rod documents, okay? If you see the golden rod, or a blue, a green document, under tab nine, those are documents we have created here in Government Affairs for you, okay? So they have your talking points, or the background of the issue, any insights we have on the issue, and also then the position that we recommend is listed there. If we make a change today to any of these items, or make a change in the coming week and are at the summit, we're going to provide you with salmon sheets, red colored sheets, to put in the binder, so that when we're at the summit, it's very easy for us to turn to you if you're lost, and like, where are we at? We're on tab 10, the red sheets, so you know exactly what to look for when we're in the midst of this. Because it will go pretty fast, if we're not, if you're, you've all been there, except for you, I think Supervisor Antiveros. If everyone's clicking, and they're all like, oh yeah, it's great, let's just move on, we get to the next item, and if you've gone to the bathroom, you'll come back, and we're three items ahead all of a sudden, and you're like, whoa, how'd that happen? So we want to have, go through an organizational process here that makes it very simple for you to follow along, so that you just turn around to any of the staff at the summit, and we'll be able to tell you right where. Also, there are some items that come up, that if you don't want to speak to them, we don't have to, we've created talking points on some, or if you want staff, if you would like to delegate to staff to speak on an issue, you certainly can do so, and have Andy or I or Government Affairs speak at the summit. So, that's sort of the table setting. I also want to say that we've split this up and made this a team effort, so I will have a few, and also Sean will be presenting on a few of the items as well. We've also provided JLBC highlights, so this is the latest fiscal condition from the state, is under tab one, which is very helpful to have. And then if you look down to the bottom of the table of contents, we provided the ACO Legislative Agenda, from the Association of Counties, and also the League of Cities and Towns Legislative Agenda. So you can just have those as contextual reference about things that our partners in local government are working on. Ready questions, just on the very brief overview on the top side of things? So, yep, absolutely. So the golden rod sheets are proposals from other counties or from CSA. Green ones are ours, okay? And if... So, yeah.
Depends on the day. Yes, Supervisor Gay, what is your question?
We're at the very beginning.
You know, I think might be helpful, is if you take a look at the agenda, which is actually tab two, which kind of lets us know, you know, where we're supposed to be and when we're supposed to be there. And then I think what you're talking about has to do with the work and voting for the resolutions, and I believe, and you correct me if I'm wrong, that that occurs on the last day, Thursday. So, it's fun and games until Thursday, and then you got to know what your color coding means, so.
I agree absolutely with what the Chair has said, but Wednesday, when you see that word "work session" on the Wednesday agenda, Wednesday's the time when we're in work session, just like now, and all 15 counties are going to come up and say, we want you to support our item, as we're talking about them, and they're going to try to convince you, either way, right? And they're going to present on their items. That would be the meat of our time to talk in politic together about, you know, should CSA be in this or not, in this realm of whatever the issue is, right? I'll use short-term rentals. We will get to that point in the agenda. Former Supervisor Jim Palmer will be the moderator of the work session, and he's really gauging, you know, what kind of support are we seeing around the room, right, and helping the county decide, is this item ready for full CSA consideration at the board meeting on Thursday?
So, we will be sitting as a county together for our work-study session on Wednesday, where we're going to go over a lot of this, and go over the pros and cons of the various proposals.
With the other counties.
With the other counties, but we will be sitting together as a group, so that we are, hopefully be able to engage with each other, and make a decision on what's the best interest for Coconino County and the state.
Correct. The other issue, we've recommended that we oppose three of these items. We'll explain when we get to those items why we recommend that. I will caveat everything with, we obviously want our items to pass, right? Some counties feel very strongly about some of their items. So we've recommended a lot of support, but this is your chance at the summit to read the room, right? If this county's item is going to go down, you don't have to support it, right? I mean, we're giving you a recommendation based on the policy, and the impact on the lobbying effort and such like that. So, if we're going to oppose something, and all of a sudden you really want to, I'll use Cochise County, they have two that we recommend opposing, but you're really concerned that you want to keep their support for a Coconino item, that's fine if we support it. We are not opposed to you changing the positions as we go reading the room. That's your sort of job to understand, so, okay?
All right. Any questions about the overview or the colors of the paper?
And then the overview, just briefly, these are the three questions for each item. We do not have to stop and answer each question for, as we go through each item in the tab here, but we're asking, do the positions on the items, are they reflective of what you, the board, have as a position, or what you believe your position is? And do the talking points we provided, and that lead speaker recommendation, meet your needs, or do you want them changed? Do you want to speak on something? We can have multiple speakers, but we sort of want to identify who's the go-to, at least for our items, the Coconino items, to be spoken, who's going to be the lead speaker. And are there any other changes, or things you need in the binder to help you with these items? So that's for each of the tabs, those are the questions that we sort of have posed to you. If we're good, you just give us a thumbs up, and we'll move on to the next tab.
And Supervisor Antiveras, I think you're the only one that hasn't been to one of these before. You have any questions or any concerns?
No, not at this time, but I know that if I do, I feel very comfortable reaching out to everyone here to get answers.
All right, very good, thank you. All right. Thanks, Eric.
Good morning, Chair Horstman, Vice Chair Vasquez, board members. I think Eric prefaced some of this pretty well, but I'll repeat a little bit, just for the summit, sometimes things will move really fast, and the color coding is important. So there will be probably salmon-colored paper by the time we get there, because stuff is always changing. So get comfortable with change, like it's not going to be fixed at the beginning, there's always stuff that happens. The other thing that's really important, I think, is reading the room, because we're not going to be the charge of Light Brigade, we don't have to die on every hill, so if there's some resolutions that we start out opposing, but we find, for example, that Yavapai County, we really need their support for short-term rental, we can huddle and discuss what our strategy is, like, is it more important to oppose somebody else's resolution, or is it more important to get ours passed? Because one thing they've done differently this year, they haven't gone in alphabet, randomized it. So our short-term rentals is the last, the last one, or the second-to-last one on the last day, so how we vote on the other resolutions, people will see that before they get to that resolution. So just something to be aware of, but with the people in the room and stuff, we can kind of see what's important to people, and if people will, I don't think everybody expects us to rubber stamp everything they do, but if, for example, something's really important to another county, we can have discussions, you can talk to Government Affairs, myself or Eric, and we could decide if we want to change our minds at any point through the process. And also, the other thing I'll mention, there's a lot of work to put the binders together. I really want to thank Sean, because I was out last week at the Rural Transportation Summit, and CSA kept sending new stuff, so we got everything organized. We both put binders together yesterday, but if you do find anything that's out of place, if it's obvious and you can fix it yourself, that's fine, but if you find something that doesn't make sense, just come to us and we'll fix it. We did double-check them all this morning, so they should be correct, but in our first pass-through, we saw some mistakes where, you know, the tab was in the wrong spot and stuff, so it's possible we missed that on a second set as well.
So if there's a problem, blame Sean. If it's right, you did it, is that...
I think it's the other way around, so, I'll take the heat for any mistakes as the director, but it could be either one of us actually who screwed it up, but I'll take the credit.
And who else is going to go? I know both of you will be there, is that, oh, no, Sean.
I will be there, and Eric will be there, and all the board members, and Andy, and then I also believe Sarah Bennett-Rare will be there, because of building the relationships since she's running for the NACO second vice president, just good to have around the supervisors.
Good, thank you.
Yep. And then, so on the first page is the JLBC highlights, that'll be there, we don't have to discuss that, that's not something I've voted on, but when you have time, I would take time to look through that, tab one. I should also mention, because we put a lot of times putting the binders together, none of, some of us are not experts on every resolution from the other counties, so if we have to learn along with you, we're happy to do that, so we won't claim to understand everything that Cochise or Hila County.
Is Karen Cruz going to be there?
Karen will be there also, yes. Very important, yep. And then, tab two is just the welcome to the summit stuff, so we can skip past that one, and get right to the resolutions. So on tab three, this is state and county partnership resolution. Our recommendation on this one is that nobody has to speak to it, we can just support it. This is kind of apple pie, should be super obvious, it's about having partnership with the state, and standing up for local control, so Resolution Three is kind of an automatic one that CSA runs every year, and so I don't think anybody needs to speak to it, you're certainly welcome to at the summit if you want to, but I will caution that one thing we probably don't want to do, we do see this from some supervisors, I won't name names from other counties that speak on every single resolution, I don't think that's a particularly great look, and it doesn't always respect people's time, so I think we should be judicious about how often we speak. I think it's fine to have a couple supervisors speak on our own resolutions, but we don't have to have...
We don't have any former state legislators on our board, so we probably won't...
You've already figured out, yeah.
We probably take the center stage.
You're right, you've solved the puzzle. So I will skip to tab number four, that is the Provide Sufficient State Funding for Probation and Courts Resolution. Again, I think this one's pretty straightforward, we'll probably support it, we don't need to speak on it, but if someone feels compelled to at the time, we can, and certainly if you feel like there's spots here where we haven't provided talking points, that you want some, we can, through the course of the week, do that and put those sheets in there, but we're trying to sort of be judicious about where we speak. I think, go ahead, sorry.
Well, on this one, you know, we have, you know, on probation, we actually pay more than what the state does, so I think it's important just to express how we are, we are ending up having to pay more, I mean, county picks up what the state doesn't pick up, the courts, we have, we end up paying for Division Seven, which, you know, we're still paying for, and the courts want a new building, and the state needs to do that. I think just pointing out how the counties are having to pick up some of these taps, and then we're paying for the judges' salaries also, that was not county, so they need to start, they need to start saying that these are county courts instead of state courts, and county staff instead of judges, instead of state judges. These are, we're at the point where we're getting these unfunded mandates, that's what this is. If we can just make a point like that, I think at least, because it's not just the county supervisors there, we have the governor's office, the state legislator staff, we have congressional delegation staff there, all the interest groups are there with us, and I think we need to, just to, you know, to paint a reality, I think we need to just put that out there, just for people to know.
Supervisor Gay, would you like then maybe to be heard, and maybe get a couple of bullet points for you to address this?
Yes, I can, and I will be Supervisor Gay.
Supervisor Fowler.
You don't have to use an alias, I'll recognize you.
Where are we, what day is it?
No, and that's exactly why we're having this meeting, I think it would be good to bring that up in front of those people, so we can, with your help or whatever, we can prepare for talking points, and you can feel free to speak up on that portion. And then tab number five, go ahead, yes.
And I think it's really important that we are multiple times stating unfunded mandates, because as more federal cuts happen, and as things get cost-shifted to the states, the state will try to cost-shift to us, which results in unfunded mandates. And so it's really important that people understand that, that, you know, sometimes we're forced by the state to fund certain things, that takes away from other programs that we could potentially have because of those unfunded mandates. Thank you.
Absolutely. And then, tab number five, we have the PSPRS Funding Resolution. Now this one, we did create some talking points, and our recommendation was that Supervisor Fowler might be our, would be our lead on that, because she's both been with the county longest, and was there at the time when some of this stuff was determined, and also worked with Mike Townsend and other people at the county. Certainly, other people could chime in, but that might be a good one for you to lead on, if you're comfortable with that, Supervisor Fowler.
It's certainly something we strongly support, and CSA did a workshop on this, hopefully everybody was able to attend that, that really went into depth on this one.
Just briefly on PSPRS, also, Mr. Townsend is leading the system as the Director of PSPRS in November. At the November 20th CSA meeting, they will have a CSA proclamation, a resolution to honor him for his service to the county, so just wanted to highlight that.
Yeah, he's, yep, he went from here to there, and cleaned it up.
The final CSA-sponsored resolution is the Transportation Funding Resolution. Obviously, we need a dedicated funding source. Supervisor Vasquez and I were at the Rural Transportation Summit in Sierra Vista last week, which that certainly came up as an issue there, and given that Supervisor Vasquez is, was at that summit, and is a transportation person on Metro Plan and our Transportation Committee person at NACO, we recommend that Supervisor Vasquez be the Coconino County Lead on this topic, and I'm sure he'll have plenty to say, and if any of the talking points, if we're missing stuff, we can review that one a little more closer to make sure we're covering all the kind of things that we learned from the last summit. It was somewhat discouraging at the Rural Transportation Summit to see some of the lawmakers still holding the position that they just want to look under couch cushions to find transportation money, but we did find quite a few lawmakers on both sides of the aisle that are looking for funding sources, so that was encouraging. Certainly, there were some of both, and we appreciate those who are interested in kind of not just running with the status quo. Any questions on the transportation one? Everybody comfortable with that?
CSA also did a very good, you know, basically informational meeting on this one as well. So any questions? Supervisor Fowler.
Madam Chair, on this one, are we going to be, are you going to bring up the fuel, the tax?
I think we should, in terms of dedicated transportation funding, I think, I mean, Arizona has now raised the gas tax since 1990, it's not indexed to inflation. I think we're only, one of only two states that have not come up with any kind of dedicated funding source in the last 35 years, so that's there. I think also, we should bring up, and we'll probably update these talking points, because this is an important resolution, but also the idea of taxing, we need to capture something from people that use electric vehicles on the road, because they will be an increasing amount of the fleet, and one of the, I mean, fuel efficiency is a good thing in some ways, but... But in the sense that if we're relying on a gas tax and cars and cars get more fuel efficient. It creates that bigger gap between what we're taking in and what we need to repair the roads because. Electric cars are, some of them are heavy and they, they do things on the roads as do trucks and everything else and somehow. Passing on some of the costs to the users, however we can do that, we should be looking at.
So the, the truck, semi trucks are now, you know, released to travel any road now. That's what it looks like. We used to have signs that. Not, not built for semi, certain weight. Now those roads, just like from the Bitter Springs, that 89A. To Fredonia over the North Rim, that is now open to trucks. That used to be closed and so with the, the fuel tax. And then the, all the construction that's going on right now is really from the infrastructure bill. So that.
Is the truth.
Been cut and all the grants have been cut. So, you know, these federal dollars that were, that we had depend on locally. To do maintenance, we're not able to tap into those anymore. I think those need to be emphasized and these. Just the trickle effect that is going, happening from the federal and it's always Coconino County's tradition has been all these years to bring up the fuel tax.
We will not disappoint on that, I'm sure.
And Supervisor Vasquez and then Supervisor Begay.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to mention something that was brought up during the, the transportation summit and that was just about. The cost of build and how over time, over the last 35 years since HIRF has been, hasn't been fixed. That the value of the dollar now is only 70% of what it was in 1990. And so not only. Is it costing more, the value of what we have doesn't have the same value that it did back then. So you have a double, a double whammy effect. You have. Less funding coming in and then the value of the dollar you do have coming in has even less value when constructing. And so it makes these projects so much more expensive. And so. That's why we need that dedicated funding service.
Yeah, it's a really good point. And also they did point out even on the transportation bar, like constructions cost, the dollar's worth even less. It's like. 40 cents on some of those items. They showed that like a 1990 beer for a dollar now costs a dollar 80. Beef was like 273 now, but. Construction stuff was three or four times more expensive.
I just want to say that I do agree with what Supervisor Fowler said. We have roads that are being used. Loop around Bird Spring, Talani Lake areas, going back into Winslow, Comay Mesa, big trucks going through there. And so other areas within our district same. So contacted Endot and they, I told them what the, the issue was. And basically apparently, I mean, Tojolay areas and other areas up that way were having the same thing, issue too. So. What they did was they ordered some signs, no wait over so much or whatever. And they put, put them at the both entrances of the. The roads that they didn't want them to travel on. So that's working. So I think, you know, we're, we're, we're going to have to get some of those signs put up. Because there is, it's, some areas where the roads, they're falling apart more now. There's big gaps in the roads that are happening with all those. Truckers, you know, going through there with heavy loads. So I think that's one of the things that we can do and they said they can order those and provide those to us. So. I just want to say we, we need to address that before all our roads tear apart and we're not going to have any money to fix them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, or we can proceed? Sure, of course. Supervisor Antiveris.
Could you like just really briefly tell me why the electric vehicles do not have to pay their fair share, if you will? On the roadways? I'm just trying to understand what the, the thought process was behind it and how. What it is now, if there's any appetite for bringing that on.
I could start and pass it over to you. Well, yeah, so there has been, so the reason is the legislature has not passed that tax. There have been lawmakers. Senator Frank Carroll from Northwest part of Maricopa County has introduced a bill a couple of times, but it's fallen short. Of the amount needed to, but there is some, of all the things that were discussed at the transportation summit, that is probably the low hanging fruit in terms of, I think. There is some bipartisan support for trying to capture some of, you know, having electric vehicle owners pay part of the cost. They did. On registration fees, I think they did impose something, but nothing on like the fill up itself. I'll pass it over to Eric because I'm sure he has more context.
The history, obviously, gas tax was brought on board long ago as a way to fuel. It's a user tax, right, for the roadway system. So as electric vehicles began to be, to hit the market, it was really an concerted effort across the nation to not disincentivize the use of electric vehicles, right? So to keep them off of the tax base for a while. We've reached that critical point now where we're all saying, but they've got to be a part of this. The parity has to exist. Excuse me. So we're at that point now, but that's, that's really the background of it is that the gas tax existed and we have not raised it, but at the same point. This sort of new mode of transportation or new, new fuel methodology was not added to simply not disincentivize their use, but we've reached a scaling point now where it's. It's reaching that point and I'll bring them into the, the funding base.
Just to add, the. Electric, electric vehicles are heavier and they take more and so the flat, the HIRF tax is only like an 18 cent flat tax. But if you're removing that and these vehicles are using the roads, there's no funding to replace, replace the damage they're doing. Only. The, the money we have is only covering vehicles that actually pay into it.
I, I kind of agree that it, it seems low hanging to me because it's really just an issue of fairness. If you, everyone who uses the roadway should have to contribute. I mean, it's that simple to me, but. That's me.
You're a little too logical for the state. We've had, just, just to add, Madam Chair, we've had this discussion for many years. Andy was so involved in it and we just didn't get anywhere. We talked to our, among ourselves, all the state, all the counties support it, but it's that the state legislators, they're, especially during election time, they won't do anything. It's really, really.
Don't you think it's because they really want to incentivize alternative fuel vehicles?
Then I'll move on to the county resolutions and Eric, as Eric mentioned, I believe there's. 20 or 21 of these that initially we're going to recommend support on 17, neutral on one and three, three to oppose. We are on seven, yep. And then we've tried to divide up who the lead speaker is to give everybody a chance to speak, but again, as we go through this, we can change some of those if we need to. So resolution number seven is permanent crops, that's a Cochise County resolution. We are recommending opposing the other two Cochise resolutions. This one, we're recommending support. I don't think we, it's. That important to us, one way or the other. Honestly, I'd have to do more research to really fully understand it. I haven't looked at this one that closely.
Madam Chair, just briefly, this item, so essentially permanent trees, grape trees, fig trees, a fruit tree and such is taxed like a row crop. So it's taxed as the land value, but you've got this permanent tree that's added that you can take value off of. That is. What Cochise wants is to codify adding the value of that permanent crop on the land to the property tax. It would increase. Property tax theoretically because right now that farmer, rancher, the orchard and such has only the value of the land they're paying for, not the value of the crop that stands permanently on the land. Cochise is making the argument, the value of that permanent crop, since those trees stand, should be included in taxation.
So it's going to increase the taxes for the farmers?
It will.
Yeah, I agree.
How intuitive.
Yeah.
That's Cochise's, that's Cochise's argument is that, that those farmers are able to then devalue and essentially have other people subsidize the tax base. Because they have a permanent tree that they get value out of and can use as a crop product, but it's not counted in the value.
You know, I'm going to say this about the, I, I don't know if I support this. I'm going to be honest with you and, and I think it's great that we're having this discussion, but some of these. I think that we, the board, should have an opportunity to hear this when we're down there on our work study session and then make a decision on it. But I think we can say that the recommendation from Government Affairs may be support, but I have some real problems with this. And my grandfather was a farmer, would have had some real problems with this.
I think, I think it gets to the tax parity argument that will come up a lot of times with use value on, on farmland.
Yeah, we can do some more research on this one before now in the summit to see the pros and cons and also determine like. Who it impacts, like which farmers and, and, and perhaps try to get, we, we'll probably. Call Anton Oriet, Cochise too, and find out what they're, why they're proposing this or what, what benefits they think. So we can. And then, you know, you can either go into the summit as support or oppose or neutral. Or go in with, we're going to read the room. We're not sure yet. Whatever way we want to go, you know. Yeah, because there would be other supervisors too who might have an opinion that are more knowledgeable, like for example, I don't know, Paul David of Graham County might have an opinion and, and that could be important. Go ahead.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Thank you. Do we know in terms of Coconino County, how many folks would be impacted if this were to be changed? I know it's important statewide, but just locally, do we know what the local impact would be? If we were to support this and it would pass?
I, I, off the top of my head, no. We don't know, but I'm also not aware even anecdotally of any permanent crop. Installations in Coconino County. Again, these are not row crops and such or a potato farm. This is a tree that's producing fruit is considered a permanent crop. So this, this, this planted item has to stay there. It can't be reseeded every year and harvested.
Yeah, it's going to really affect Yuma, for example, with.
I think this one caught a lot of people off guard because of the reaction you just gave, you know, at the county manager's meeting, you know, because they're like, well. This is, these are farmers and there's, there's some case law. I encourage you to read the CSA fact sheet that's here. It was a lot of, a lot of silence and I think a lot of people just trying to figure out. What is sort of the will? Should we get into this? Really an assessor question about how do we assess land? Should ACO really have this? You know, those kinds of questions.
I actually was going to ask if the assessors have weighed in on this.
I, I'm not aware that they have. It's not on the ACO agenda. I think Cochise County is bringing it up this way. I don't know if their assessor is bringing it to the ACO, trying to add it over on that agenda. Those are, yeah, we'll, we'll get some information, but those are the classic questions that come up on Wednesday at the work session, right? And why a lot of times things are defeated, so.
And I was just looking through the guidance here too, that the Farm Bureau, Farm Bureau, Arizona Farm Bureau had concerns that it might. Impact some of the smaller farmers, which I think would be more concerning if it was a tax on people with big orchards. So we'll have to take a closer look at that.
Let's take a look, let's read the room and let's move on.
Sounds good. Next tab, tab number eight is Compensation Equalization Resolution out of Yavapai County. I believe Supervisor Brooks Compton put this one forward. We did put talking points here, I believe, and we recommend oppose. We haven't decided. Who necessarily wants to speak on that, so we could decide that here. But I think the concern here is what they're trying to do is, is. Raise salaries to the, for the really large counties right now, like the Board of Supervisors makes 96,000 for Maricopa and Pima County. Yavapai is trying to lower that threshold so that they're included in that group. It doesn't come down as far as our county. I think the. Issue here, and it came up in the county manager's meeting, is, is we just raised salaries of elected officials in the state. Just recently and I think politically to, to, to go and ask for more money there, it's, it's probably not going to be pop, it's not something the legislature is going to be inclined to pass and. And it looks like a little bit carve out it, and it could even look like the person's trying to raise his own salary. I'm not, you know, which.
Which they can't do.
Well, yeah, it would go after the next.
Constitution does not allow the.
Right.
Salaries go up. So this would wait until the next election happens.
Assuming, yeah, they would have to run again to get that salary, but.
So, you know, the other is this, I want to just point out, you pointed it out at the beginning and I want us to remember, we do not need to speak on everything. There are a lot of people. They're going to be there and there will be some that will have to speak on everything. And, you know, quite frankly, sometimes it's, it's counterproductive. So I, for example, I think this is ridiculous and I certainly would oppose it, but I don't think anybody needs to speak on it. I may be different. Than other members of my board and certainly members of the board. If during this, and it may come up after we've had our meetings. And heard what other people said, we might feel passionate enough about it, but I hope that you're not going through here and trying to. Assign somebody for every single one of these.
No, we're not. In fact, we, we only have.
Talking points were provided simply to help give you some background if you wanted to speak and some of the issues related herein to those items.
And I think it is good to hold back on this one and I think Supervisor Fowler and Chair Horstman both alluded to this. One, we need Yavapai's support on some of the other resolutions. The other thing that I think will happen. Is there will be supervisors from other counties who will speak out against this. I actually wouldn't be surprised if in the Wednesday session. So many people speak out against it that they actually pull it and it doesn't even get voted on on Thursday. So my suggestion is that. Coconino does not lead the charge here, that we just quietly sit back. Somebody else, probably Mojave County or Cochise, somebody will oppose it. And then if, if it does come to vote, we can join the opposed if we feel compelled to, but we don't have to be leading the opposition to this. I don't think it would be. Necessarily in our best interest to do that, so. Moving on, number nine, binder number nine, you will see is green. So that is one of ours. That is the recapitalization of the wildfire emergency response fund. Which I could see the chair is very excited about. We've, we've done this one before. We've taken out the dollar amount. We've done some revisions to it. And certainly we will speak on this. Chair Horstman has spoken on this in the past. In terms of spreading things around, we also thought maybe they could. Pass it to Supervisor Begay and, and then Supervisor Horstman could add context, but that's if you're comfortable talking on it. We'll give you talking points and we can brush those up. We probably need to add a little. I think Lucinda Andriani has also looked at this and may have some. New context for our talking points to, to make sure that there is updated as possible, because I know one thing in our summary there, I think we mentioned the number of. Major fires we've had since 2010. Of course, we had a couple more this year, so I think that number probably has to be changed. The. Summary isn't part of the actual resolution that gets voted on, but, but we should have all the background. If, if we need to make any changes, we'll have all the information accurate before the summit. Any questions on this one? Yes. So we'll, so we'll have them pass it to Supervisor Begay. You can lead it and then if Supervisor Horstman would like to speak on it, I think that's helpful.
Supervisor Begay, do you want to speak on this? Okay, good.
Yes, and I'm going to pass it to Eric for three of them, so you don't have to just listen to me all the time.
Madam Chair, members, I know you don't listen to me all the time, so I'll go through three of these here. So item number 10, if you want to turn to tab 10, this comes from Yuma County. Soon, Pima County, coordinated reentry? Okay, coordinated reentry across the state of Arizona. So we certainly recommend support. Pima County urges the legislature to. Have monies appropriated for coordinated reentry services. We, we support this. I know we think we need to talk about it, so. Okay, all right. I'm sorry. I apologize. So I guess I'll keep going here. Keith will come back in here shortly, a moment when I find where I'm, I've got two extra. Accountability for maintaining non-owned properties. Item number 11 is from Hila County. This is going to be, there's some, there's some changes that have come up, so I really encourage you to read the CSA fact sheet. The underlying principle we support. The proposal we support. It's just a tough process to understand how they essentially have properties owned by non-residential taxpayers way out, you know, in other states. They're not taking care of the properties, so they have to go in and clean them up. And they want to essentially attach to tax bills, you know, and such. Costs that the tax, that the taxpayers are boring, are bearing, but it's not, it's not an easy process to get to that. And it involves the treasurer and some other issues. And so they will explain it very well. And so they will explain it very well. I encourage us to support it. I'm explaining it very poorly, but there's some very intricate process pieces to just listen for on Wednesday at the work session, okay? But the underlying issue is valid and we experience that as well. Non-residential property, you know, that ends up becoming, you know, burdened with stuff and we have to go clean things up or such, how do the taxpayers not bear the cost of that problem? All right. Now I'm on my items, I was supposed to be here.
Oh.
Right.
It came up last year as well, and I believe there were a couple other years that has, this has been an ongoing discussion. So it's not, it's not new to the.
Hila does have a lot of these and they're experiencing a big, a lot of exposure. Solar energy consumer protection from Yuma, this is what I intended to come up first about, but Yuma County Supervisor Lyons, and they have contacted us and asked for our support. We recommend on tab 12, 12, thank you, we recommend a support or a neutral position. There are bad actors in the solar energy profession, right, that don't certify the roof is capable to hold their panels and such like that and cause issues. There's also many good actors. This would put regulation on the solar energy panel installers to go into roof inspection and actually, you know, verify roofs can hold these things. It's a good consumer protection policy. Just be aware that there are good parts of that industry that are like, we're going to be punished and have to increase a cost or bear another burden because of those bad actors. So certainly are supportive or neutral, we don't oppose it, but it also, as you recognize and you get in these battles about the regulation, parts of that industry, solar energy industry are, you know, are good actors and are doing these things, but they view it as will be some burdensome. Governor's office had some issues with this. I don't, I don't think they're opposed to it, they just had some issues on how it's going to be implemented and its concerned impact on the solar energy market, you know, in terms of those installers. But there are consumer protection issues as well that need to be addressed. So that's, again, support or neutral is our recommendations.
I do have a question, Chair. What I'm wondering about is like when you go and get a building permit, isn't there some kind of an inspection that somebody else does besides the solar people?
I don't believe so. Don't believe so. I think if your roof has been built, now you're adding on to that, the inspection that's happening on solar is about the installation of the panel, but isn't looking at the underlying, is there any issues with the roof?
Yeah, because I was thinking about like a snow load kind of a thing. You know what I mean?
Yuma County doesn't deal with snow load.
No, no, they don't. You're absolutely right with that. Yeah, I just was wondering if there was anything else that could regulate this, if it could be tossed to someone, anyone.
Maybe, but I.
So that the bad, yeah, because I hate to see good penalized. I hate, but I know.
I think that's a good, so it's one of the things I'd bring up. Supervisor Lyons from Yuma is a roof installer, okay? So be aware of that in your conversations with him, you know, and so he brings that perspective, the other side of this conversation. But I think it's important just to ask around as well. The managers really didn't have a conversation about it. At first I was in the same spot and really was going to recommend opposed, but it doesn't really strike me as a county issue in many ways. But if they are seeing consumer protection issues, which they did describe to us, you know, it may be ripe for some kind of regulation. I just don't know to what level, you know, haven't put enough energy in research. Really just wanted to hear from them directly at the summit. So number 13, I want to give, we do support, I want to also give credit to Navajo County. We asked for an amendment from their original proposition to what is being presented now. So in law right now, it says that no one can use our seal and our, you know, our name without our permission. So there's a case over there where the Navajo Hashknife Search and Rescue Posse is using Navajo Nation's seal, or Navajo County's seal and name, excuse me, without their permission. And there was, there was a court case about that, you know, and such. And so they would like to strengthen the statute to make it very clear. We asked for the inclusion of our logo and also any brand identity. So the logo on the PowerPoint, you know, is not our seal, but we use it very often. So they were very agreeable to that. AECO also has this item on their agenda and they are agreeable to our amendment as well. So. Then my favorite of all time, the Cold Plunges Resolution, this is green. So Maricopa did yesterday vote to endorse and to author this issue. That has taken four months for them to get to, but I was really thankful Maricopa County is going to be the lead. So they are the lead and they will be there to speak. You don't have to speak to it. I do encourage you to be supportive. There are talking points if necessary on that issue, so. So I want to be very clear, they voted for one, former legislator Debbie, Congresswoman Debbie Lesko voted no, not necessarily out of the merits. She really doesn't like cold plunges at all, and so she'd rather just outlaw them. That's what she wanted to do, so. But we were like, well, that's really not our role to outlaw them, so. But Supervisor Gallardo will be present and is endorsing the resolution as well. And they're going to send staff to speak, their actual director of their Health and Environmental Services.
Okay, let's go on.
I'm going to grab one and then I'm going to pass it over to Sean. So tab number 15 is the Homeowners Affordability Insurance, that's our resolution. It's quite possible that more than one supervisor may want to speak on this, but we thought the lead should probably be the chair here.
You know, I'd actually like Supervisor Ante Veras to speak on this. I know she's been extremely passionate about it and I'll add a couple words if I need to, but I think she should speak on this.
That's fine. The other thing I'll mention is we do have her leading on short-term rentals, so you can tag team that way either way or switch or however you want to do it, or you can have her lead on both and chime in.
We'll figure that out between ourselves.
That sounds fair. Yep, that's absolutely, and I think that one's pretty straightforward. There will be a lot of discussion on it, I'm sure, and Pima County, of course, has co-sponsored on that, and I know Michael Rossi and possibly Rex Scott, some of the others. I'm sure Pima will have plenty to say too, so, and possibly Yavapai as well. Any questions on that?
I want to point out one thing. Can you please turn in that tab to the middle of the white sheets? We, Coconino County, breaking tradition one more time, instead of sort of endorsing the idea at the summit and then in November adopting a resolution of CSA, we have worked with Mr. Rossi and CSA to draft the resolution to be adopted at the summit. Just get it done at the summit. So it's on, it says page 69 on top in your packet in that tab, has drafted. That is the actual resolution that we have put together, working with the county, with Pima County and CSA. So on Thursday, rather than, what will happen is on all these, I'd say resolution, is they'll say, we'll say, yep, we all vote to endorse it, and then they'll bring back resolution language in November. We didn't want to wait and have anything go wrong between October and November, potential lobbying from anyone else, so we put together the resolution to meet both Coconino and Pima's requests to the CSA and just get it done in October.
Smart. Good job.
Yeah, and I was wondering, as this has been out there floating around, have there been any opposition points that you could let us know about? One that I'm wondering about is, because we have heard from our speakers that have come in to speak to this topic, that one of the cost drivers is mandates. And I'm wondering, has this been really, really carefully evaluated to make sure that we're not creating problems while we're trying to fix something?
Yes, and it'll probably continue to be evaluated, but we have been very careful to remove mandate language. We've had many discussions with CSA, with Pima and Yavapai County, with other people. And also, we should note that several, there are some county supervisors that work in the insurance industry. I know Supervisor Seymour in Navajo County and stuff. And so we have been conscious to avoid having mandates. We've had a lot of talks also with our lobbyist Karen Cruz about making sure, because as you probably know, to her live-in partner, her husband is a lobbyist for the insurance agency, so she has a kind of inside view of what's a non-starter for them and what things can be worked on. So through those discussions, we've tried to get this at a spot where it's not overly prescriptive, it's not California light or the Colorado model. We've even looked at why Utah and some of the other more, I guess, conservative states you could say have done and to look at things like that. So we're hopeful that, there might still be pushback on that Wednesday, but we've tried to make this not insurance company mandate thing, but try to make it so that there's reform that everybody can be at the table and we can at least move in a direction. Does that, Eric, anything else?
Supervisor Ante Veras, I would draw you to page 70 and 71, the resolution, and down at the bottom of 70 is the resolved. Again, remember, this is a resolution, authorizing resolution essentially, that let CSA then find the bill that's viable, that parties and a coalition can get around and, you know, we'll never have mandated coverage without having a big fight, right? And I'm not, we're not suggesting mandated coverage. We are trying to increase access to and affordability of homeowners' insurance, right? And this menu of options given is very clearly a menu of possible options, not limited to, but not meaning to have in it, right? If the best bill we get is simply, you know, a statement of support, you know, for more insurance, great, that's, you know, CSA is authorized to go lobby on it and such like that. But I think it's really key to keep it back. We are not asking for mandated coverage, mandated underwriting in any way. I also draw out to you JLBC highlights, if you notice. The insurance tax premiums are up multiple percentage points in the last year. It's a $4 million net increase in taxes alone on insurance premiums paid to the state, so. But we're seeing the premium increase there that everyone, all of us are paying, those that have insurance, opening up a new, opening up a surplus in the insurance side on.
Just kind of states our intention, that we want to be making some partnerships and changes on this to try to make it, you know, both accessible and affordable. So I was just meeting with the Mount Eldon Homeowners Association on Sunday on this exact issue, and unfortunately, even in Mount Eldon Estates area, there also are a number of people that have received, we will not insure notices. And it was very interesting, some of the people there were basically saying, we need to impose, you know, X, Y, and Z, we need to, and I said, you know, the more we start doing that, the less likely, number one, we're going to lose our insurance market, and number two, we're going to lose our residents. And so obviously, I like the nature of how this reads. It basically says, we need to continue to move forward on all fronts to come up with a solution to this. So I like that, so thank you. And I really like you did that resolution. That was great. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, this was one of the ones, because I know that I had asked you for talking points before I addressed the Williams City Council, and I mean, this is a very big thing. And there just is concern that we don't do something, and I don't think that we are doing this. I mean, it's calling out things that, giving more notice, like it's really kind of bringing out issues of fairness, if you will. And so I just, I just put that out there because I'm not going to be surprised if somebody doesn't bring up the same thing I just said right there. And so how we respond to that.
I expect that'll happen and, oh, yeah, and I expect maybe even if it does come to vote, it might not be unanimous, but if we can get to a spot where most people are comfortable at then, we're doing pretty good. Go ahead.
I think it's important to note, I think it's important to say on the front end, this, we are not calling for a bill or CSA to be the lead on a bill even, you know, to go do a mandated coverage or a California-style insurance regulatory policy. But rather, we want to be part of a coalition that can find the most viable option to move us forward on attaining an affordable rate for insurance for our home. And all, I just want to be clear, the managers, they're incredibly supportive. But there'll be some supervisors certainly that are politically opposed in some ways, but I do think we have a very good, strong shot at passage.
I do.
Given the impact that we've seen around the state.
Supervisor Fowler.
Thank you. I think this is important because the Governor's Committee basically just dwindled out, even their recommendation, or there was no recommendation. So I think this really keeps the conversation going and shows the state legislators how dire the need is for our homeowners. And I think the more we give examples of what's happening, the better they'll understand. Right now, they just don't understand. Majority of the state legislators do not live in these areas or represent constituents that have these issues. So I think it's really important to emphasize the importance of paying attention to this issue right here.
Anything else on the insurance ones? And in the next six resolutions, I'm going to pass it over to Sean. He'll think I'm being nice, but I, we'll point out, three of the six are from Cochise County, so I think that makes it more interesting, so I'm going to let him explain those.
Chair, Vice Chair, Board, Sean Johnson, your Government Affairs Manager. And I'm just going to pick up right where Keith left off. This is from Cochise County, and this is adjustments to open meeting law. And this was brought up from Cochise because they're a three-member board, and so they kind of get caught in their quorum, which, with two, opposition, we really can't have that for the public. They're a board of three, it's just how it is, but we still had to have the public able to. So we are going to say oppose to this and I'll open it up to questions. Easy one.
Just that all three-member boards have this issue.
Exactly.
Across the country, they all talk about this.
Not just an Arizona County thing, you say. And then we will move on. Another one from Cochise, this is binder tab 17, revised sellers' property disclosure form. And this one is very useful for how we look at it, for people buying property, it lets the designated zoning, it tells whether the property is within five miles of special or commercial zoning, and then also if the property is designated zoning, that the fact the change to zoning is not guaranteed. So this just provides more information to buyers and it's definitely a support from us.
No, but this is another one I want to hear, kind of read the room and hear what's going on.
Yeah, I do too, because I know we could be here all day, but I'm really wondering the why on some of these. And the why will come out at the meeting, so that's why I'm just going to hold back on that, yeah.
And we'll move right on to binder tab 18, and this is from Hila, Penal, and Yavapai. And this is the WIFA forgivable funding for cesspool and outdated septic systems infrastructure. And I know Chair is on the WIFA board, I can hear this. This one would allow for, I believe it's just Pima County now that would get this grant that is available for grant funding for any cesspools, you've got septic tanks for cleaning those up. And this would just provide more opportunities for local and rural communities to get their outdated septic tanks or anything like that taken care of and updated as well.
What I don't understand about any of this is that any proposal needs to go to the WIFA board and be voted on by the WIFA board based on a very extensive rubric for determining highest and best use of the Arizona-funded programs. And so I'm not even sure how this even relates, to be honest with you. And I do not think that they would have the authority to tell the WIFA board that they are forgiving the fund.
Right.
So I see you've got this on as a support, but I sure have a problem with that.
We'll mark that down as well. Oh, speak up, sorry, speaking to the mic.
A state statute change?
The only way to do it would be through, in my opinion, would be through a state statute.
Which is exactly what they're asking for. So they are not going to the WIFA board, they're trying to go to the legislature to include a new use of WIFA funds, make a forgivable fund, so.
And I'm going to tell you, I totally oppose it. Part of the reason for the WIFA is that we have a combination between grants and loans, very low-interest loans. We're supposed to be a revolving fund. We've got to be very careful how we manage then, the ratio between grants and loans, or we're not going to be a revolving fund. That means it's going to limit the other programs and the other infrastructure projects that many of the counties have. So, and quite frankly, I think this is going to work against the rural counties. So I'm not for it, can you tell?
Definitely make note of that.
I think there's a lot of read the room. Hila, and especially Hila, parts of Yavapai and Penal do have a major cesspool problem, you know, I mean, just old, old sewer systems. And I'm not saying that's, we all know that's a good thing to do, they're searching for a product that could fund it. And they picked up this one for.
And they can come before the WIFA board with their proposal. I mean, that's like everybody else, by the way. So anyway. I mean, that's, like everybody else, by the way. So anyway.
Yeah, we're talking septic tanks.
And, and open cesspools.
And open cesspools. Okay. And that's the property owner.
It's property owner, but it's also a health and safety, it's a, we, as a regulatory issue for counties there as a part of assessing an old wastewater system or cesspool and health and welfare. So they, legitimate concern, right? Whether or not the funding mechanism is the appropriate way.
Okay, yeah. It's a legitimate concern that needs to get taken care of.
Correct.
Absolutely. And that, and, and I disagree with this being the answer. And it could already be a proposal for them to break before the WIFA board.
Which is, again, a property owner. I think in this way, the county's looking for a way to put the counties in charge as they condemn some of these places or things like that, and put themselves in as a potential recipient. Again, whether or not the mechanism solves the, solves the problem is another story.
Any other questions? We'll move on to tab nineteen. This is from Pima County. And this is permanent state funding for the Arizona State Historic Preservation Office. This is a support from us. And right now, as it stands, the state board actually gets 60% of their funding from the federal grants. That's 1.1 million, I believe. And the state hasn't given their portion since 2019. So they're operating right now off of 1.1 million. They're asking for 2.2 for every year moving forward. So we definitely support this for the state and for Pima as well. Any question? And then I think this is my last one, tab twenty, fire code inspection waiver from, excuse me, municipalities over 100,000 people. This is from Yuma.
You know, if I can just, to go back.
Oh, absolutely.
On nineteen, we may, we may, just throwing this out, may want to speak to this and support. You know, for example, we got the legislation by Representative Rogers on our historical, Gokio County Pioneer Historical Museum. And, and this is the kind of thing that would make sure that a lot of our historical museum, the Riordan Mansion, et cetera, that they continue to be funded. So I, I mean, I think these are very beneficial for us here.
Absolutely.
We may want to speak on this. So.
We can make notes too.
And make some notes, get some, get some bullet points on this and call in to note that just our Pioneer Historical Museum and other.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair. Now we will move on to tab twenty. So this is the fire code inspection waiver. And this is for municipalities over 100,000 people. Right now, as it stands, some counties, they would go with the state fire inspection. These are asking for smaller municipalities as well as counties to use the city's fire, I guess, what would you call it? Fire regulations, fire code, yep.
This comes out of Yuma County itself, is building new properties, new buildings, and is required under state law to get the state fire marshal to do their fire inspections, rather than having the city inspector be able to do those fire inspections of the local city fire department, fire inspector in that regard. They are asking for that ability to do the locals because waiting for the state fire marshal, they believe will delay their process on some of their buildings and also potentially, you know, there's a different code there and understanding of what Yuma has implemented locally. It's a, it's a county building itself is prompting this, this request of the.
This is just a general question, but there are experts in these fields, if you will. And have, has their input been sought?
So their input has been sought. Usually the managers in CSA, if you look to the background sheets, will note where they have contacted in Yuma. They go, not, they go to us, the lobby type of people, but then they'll reach into who's your code inspector? How does this work? How does this work when they talk to the state fire marshal's office and such? And get sort of the, the input and the understanding of all the parties.
And this will be my last one. Last one from Cochise as well. We are going to go into this one opposed. This is for the Board of Supervisors to retain their own outside legal counsel on top of the city attorney, or sorry, excuse me, county attorney. I'm saying city stuff. But we definitely oppose this. We believe that this should be brought in front of ACO as well as the county attorneys, just to have that discussion to start with before having Cochise make this move for being able to have this. This is based on past issues, we'll say, that Cochise County was having. And we are definitely in oppose to this as of now.
And I'll give you a little more context, because Cochise has this. And these kind of bills usually come up when they bump into a wall, they want to do something and council issue has provided that, you know, and told them they couldn't or such, a council, counselor, I should say. Not that ours wouldn't do that. Pinal also had the same issue. Part of the issue is for the Board of Supervisors, they must get the permission of the county attorney to hire an outside counsel, right? You know what I'm saying? If, and if they don't get, in many counties, they've gotten not the answer they want from the outside counsel that is hired. So then they want to hire another counsel. This happened in Pinal County. The county attorney conflicted out about whether or not the chief deputy must be confirmed by the Board of Supervisors. The outside counsel, the first outside counsel said they do not need to be confirmed by the Board of Supervisors. And then the Board of Supervisors hired their own counsel that said, oh, they absolutely do, reading the statute from 1914 or such. So the point being is, why we are bringing this opposed, this was a long conversation, and I prompted it at, at CSA. It was one of those, end of the day, and people wanted to go, but I'm like, hmm, you know. This is a real issue because if you open this door up, the other elected officials will want to be able to hire counsel as they choose. And if we're going to disembodied the civil attorney division, I'll use that term, from the elected official that oversees them now, really you're having a conversation about what does corporation counsel or a chief legal counsel office look like within a county? And that needs a much more robust conversation about county structure with all the other partners than just doing it based on an incident that happened at a county.
Thank you very much. I'm going to switch it back over to Keith.
I was going to pop in, because I knew you missed me. So I'll just show up for short-term rentals, and then I'll hand it back to Sean. So binder number twenty-two is increased local control over short-term rentals. I know many of our board members have been really involved in this. We've had conversations. You know, Supervisor Antiveros has also worked with the City of Williams and the City of Sedona. I think Supervisor Horseman and others with the City of Flagstaff. And, and I think, and Page, City of Page, Supervisor Fowler. So it's, it's an issue in the county. I think our recommendation is that we have them pass it to Supervisor Antiveros as the lead, but certainly others can speak on it as well. Any questions on that one?
The assessors also have a bill related to classification going through ACO. So a piece of our resolution, ACO is endorsing it from their perspective and the assessor's side.
And it was also my understanding that the City of Leagues and Towns, did I say that right?
Correct. Yeah, cities and towns.
Yeah, is.
Towns and cities, we'll put towns for.
Is also, do they also have a resolution?
They do.
Okay.
They do. So essentially, this passing, and we do expect passage, CSA will join in the coalition with ACO and with the League to work on a local preemption rollback.
Yeah.
Type of legislation, and also then support the assessor's legislation on classification.
Okay.
Supervisor Fowler.
Thank you. I think this is another one that is really important to really explain the impact, the economic impact, housing impact, the workforce, housing, all of, everything that we are very knowledgeable about and what we are going through with our, with our economy and with just the, the impact to our communities. And I, I, because else, that it's for the education of others. It's really, we can't just say we already know what's going on. These are the only things we're going to mention. We need to be very detailed on this because we, we're trying to get the ears of the, the, the people that draft these legislations to have, to help them with their own talking points, their own writing, their own articulation, whatever that they're going to be writing, they need to be articulate. So that means that we need to be in the same way to give them the words that they need. So that's why I think this one, it sounds like Tammy will be speaking on it. But I think it really needs to be very, emphasis need to be made sometimes. Thank you.
And it's possible we could have additional supervisors chime in on that one if we need to. And I, the other thing I'll mention is there's a lot of excitement around this one from other supervisors. Sometimes when I get approached by supervisors from Yavapai County, that's what they want to talk about. So both Supervisor Check and Supervisor Kukneal have spoken on this quite a bit. Also, in terms of the lawmakers, LD1 has a couple of the people that have been trying to lead on this. Representative Bliss and Senator Fincham have, have proposed resolutions in this space. And so, and they actually do represent a couple precincts in Tammy's district. They do get into the Sedona part of Coquenio County. So that might be legislative people that we can push for. The, I guess the other thing is to make sure we have people that can get it heard in committee. Some of those bills got sidelined before, but go ahead, Chair.
Well, I, I think also people are pretty well-versed with this in that we have been a very, Gokio County as well as others, have been a very strong advocate the first time when we did successfully get some legislation to allow a little bit of oversight and control for our short-term rentals. And, and Gokio County, quite frankly, had the lead on that. And I'm, I'm very proud of our short-term rental ordinance to the extent we can have one. I think we have, we have brought it to its logical conclusion, but we need more. And so, you know, obviously, this is extremely important. And Gokio County's always had a good role, lead role in this. So we definitely want to be heard on this one.
Absolutely.
And, you know, I think one of the things I'd recommend in your, in terms of the, some of the bullet points, they're way too broad. I, I really think you need to bring it down individually to what this means. You know, what does this mean about, and, and I think it's great to talk about Williams. I think you should talk about Flag. I think you should also talk about the City of Flagstaff. Because quite frankly, we're all impacted by it. And I think we can talk then about the percentages of homes that get taken off the market because of short-term rentals. How many short-term rentals there are in these, in these municipalities versus the county? You know, I, so I'd get into some specifics on this. This is important.
Yeah, we can drill down on that. I think that's a good idea.
Okay, and I, I would like to add because I know that in Williams, I think that there, there was kind of this thought when this began, that this was going to be kind of a mom and pop, a way to help, you know what I mean, pay the rent, that kind of a thing. And I wish there was some way to point out what had, what has happened in Williams, which is seventy to, seventy-five to eighty percent of the short-term rentals are actually corporate or out-of-state owned. So it's not that mom and pop. I think that's a really big, a really big difference that this, this is commercial.
Yeah, I think we need to include that. I agree.
Yeah, and perhaps even, because I know it was brought up at that meeting, but perhaps maybe call City Manager Tim Pettit or Williams Mayor Don Dent and get, get the specifics, because they've got a story to tell. They really do. And sometimes a picture's worth a thousand words, and I'll leave it there.
Like, that's absolutely right. And, and I think this one will get discussed a lot on that Wednesday, too. We'll have to read the room. There'll be other people comment. The one thing, too, that you brought up earlier that I think is important, sort of on the other end, is to make sure that we tell that story. And also, if people move in the direction, I, I think I've heard some supervisors wanting to ban short-term rentals. I think that would, that would kill it. So I don't think we want to, we want to make sure that it's available for the mom and pops, but that, that there's some kind of limit on them so that they can't just take over a community. Any other, I want to touch that one. So I didn't want Sean's last thing to be talking about Cochise County. So I'm going to let him take it home with the ACO stuff.
As Sean turns to ACO, I just want to point out the election commission, tab, are you going to do this one as well? Elections?
Yep.
Permanent statewide solution. This is twenty-three. I got to keep using these glasses to see the tab number, sorry.
Madam Chair.
Tab twenty-three, election items.
Wait, wait a minute, wait a minute. Supervisor Fowler.
I apologize. But before we go on, I think what Keith said just now is really important. When the state legislators talk about short-term rentals, they're talking about families renting their place out. And what you just brought out, Tammy, is so true. It's the corporations that are buying up these places, a whole apartment. And overnight was taken over in Page. And it's just like, everybody had to move out. And where do they move to? No, no rentals. So I think emphasizing that and saying that these, the issue is with these corporations. And I, I know that our assessor, that's been the issue too, because the assessing of these properties is very different than, than a family-owned.
Correct. And right now, they, those corporations that own these properties are being assessed as a residential property, right? And not as a business taking up a residential.
All right, let's proceed.
We're good. No, we're good, we're good. You're good. Permanent statewide solution. I was not prepared for this one.
That's right. Let me, let me hop in. So last year, the legislature, there was a problem with the calendar of the election timeline. And that, that was, the legislature solved it for one year, right? And so rather than coming back to this year after year, trying to solve this compression and the right-to-cure ballots and such like that, the Election Association, which our elections director is the vice chair of statewide, has asked CSA again, ACO has agreed to run a bill to just make this permanent change to the election calendar so that we don't have the problems of the interlapping between the primary and the general election. Just solve that problem permanently.
Definitely support it.
I agree with you.
Yes, and there's certain timelines, sorry, Madam Chair, certain timelines that have to be met all the way until somebody takes an oath in the election cycle. So that's what's really needs to, instead of moving it around. Because in our region, Navajo Nation, elections, and every time this happens, we have to work with Navajo Nation so that we can have them change their election date that is the same day as the state elections. When we have our elections, we have it in the same building, community building, one on state, one on the nation side, so that people can go out and vote one time rather than going one day and then another day, or missing out most likely on one of the elections. So for that reason, this is very important. I think we need to really emphasize the importance at the local level because what we're, while we're changing all of this, we're changing people's schedule. That's what we need to emphasize on, on this one as well. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Supervisor. And then just for our last two, we have ACO and the League's legislative proposals. One highlight, and I know Eric already mentioned it, was STRs, ACO's onboard as well as the League. So to have that kind of coalition down at the state legislature, I think is a really big deal. And we could really possibly make some movement on this. So, and then any other questions from their legislative proposals? But just wanted those, you to have those.
One minute. Not about their proposals, another issue but for summit.
Okay.
So at the summit is also elections. You'll start to hear from the candidates heading towards November's actual election at CSA. Is the large county caucuses term to bring forward a nominee for the fourth vice president role at CSA? It is likely, I say likely because something may arise, but at this point, county supervisor from Maricopa, Kate Brophy McGee, is running for fourth vice president out of the large counties. She's a former legislator running for that, that role as a CSA president. So Maricopa informed us of that yesterday in our conversation. So I just wanted to make you all aware that the large counties, so that's Pinal, Pima, and Maricopa, are, are likely going to be, we'll have to hash that out and bring forth a nominee. Likely, I would guess, to be Kate Brophy McGee, given, given that indication. So, and that would not be a bad choice for CSA at all, so.
All right, anything else? Otherwise, I'm going to ask members of, members of the board. I see Supervisor Fowler, but now is the time to basically address the issue. So Supervisor Fowler first.
Yes, in terms of election, I'm the vice chair of the medium-sized caucus now. So I'm going to put my name forth for the chair of the medium-sized caucus as well.
Thank you. I thought you were already the chair of the medium-sized caucus.
And Supervisor Antiveros, we bring all that up because summit, you'll start to see the discussions of it, but it's November is when those elections are. So you're not caught off guard.
All right, any other comments or questions? Any comments, questions on the process, procedure, where we're supposed to be and when? All right, that's pretty good. Thank you. Thank you for all your. Thank you, thank you for all your hard work on this. I know it's, it's a lot. So, and you know, some of it I think is, is going to be a wait-and-see and, and for us to listen and learn and make some decisions then, so. If that's the case, we are going to take a lunch break. It's just after twelve and we will be back at one fifteen.
Are you going to do this pre-retreat dinner? We're going to get out of here and get there by 6:50.
Yeah.
We are on and we are back. So, welcome back from lunch and it's good to see everybody. And for those that are online for our board meeting, we are continuing. We are on number nine. This is a presentation discussion and direction regarding preparation. Oh, that, we did that. Never mind. I'm moving along. We need to resolve as the Flood Control District Board of Directors to have a motion.
So move.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. We are now the Flood District Board of Directors. We are here on number 10. Presentation to update the Flood Control District Board of Directors on the Status of the Tucson Drainage Master Plan and Tucson Local Flood Plane. We do have with us, of course, our Director of the Flood Control District, Lucinda Andriani. And I also, before we get started, want to introduce, and we have with us the Mayor of Tucson, Clarinda Vale. Many of you know Clarinda, and we really appreciate her joining us here for this presentation today. So, thank you for being here, Clarinda. And with that, I'm going to turn this over to Lucinda Andriani.
Alrighty. Good afternoon, Chair and members of the Board. Pleased to be here today and thank you, Mayor, for joining us. Really appreciate your engagement has been tremendous in this process. The Mayor and Council have been very engaged and we truly appreciate that partnership. I'm happy to report we're making very good progress on the overall planning effort for Tucson. And last week, we took the opportunity to update the Tucson Town Council and today to update the Board. And also very pleased to report that the engineering team, myself, the town engineer, have reached a consensus as to the preferred alignment of the flood mitigation both through town as well as the measures proposed upstream of town on forest. Today, the team will be providing you some detail on that, those preferred measures. And those were, again, presented to the Council last week and were well-received. And I know the plan is to consider that for an action item on their November 4th meeting. So, we'll look forward to that as well. You know, I'll kind of take some of the thunder from the team, but it's important because I want to reiterate, have this be able to be reiterated a couple of times. As you know, as we entered this process, knowing that there is a significant volume of water going through Tucson in a hundred-year rainfall event, you know, equivalent to 10,000 cubic feet per second, which is Lee's Ferry at Colorado River at Lee's Ferry. It's a significant amount of water. And frankly, going into this, we weren't sure what we potentially could accomplish. And I think the engineering team's done a great job in identifying measures. Importantly, the measures that are proposed and are being recommended to move forward with are the preferred measures to move forward into Phase 2. We're in the process of completing Phase 1. In fact, it is completed, the Drainage Master Plan itself, now moving into the design concept report and then into construction drawings. But those measures will bring, will meet the ADOT 25-year standard for Highway 64, which is very important relative to securing transportation grants. It will, these measures will provide 100-year flood mitigation to the Tucson Sanitary District Wastewater Treatment Plant, which again is a very important, I'll say, milestone to reach. And then 25-year mitigation for the town itself. In addition, and you'll see this on a map to make more sense, but the two, you may remember that there are two smaller tributaries that come into town, Water Tank and Middle Wash. And those two will be mitigated by these proposed measures to the 100-year flood mitigation. So, I think, given the challenges we have in Tucson, that being able to accomplish these milestones is very important. So, with that, go to the next slide here. Where are we in the process? You know, that there are kind of three main elements to the drainage, overarching drainage master plan. One is the master plan, which identifies the conceptual projects, which we have now done and those will be reported on today. Then we move into, moving to the 30% design, design concept report. Much of what needs to occur during that phase is the, our determining feasibility of the measures. And key to that feasibility is conducting geotechnical work. And what that means is soil testing. Soil testing for the flood retarding measures on forest, to test the soils and the bedrock there to see if it could support those flood retarding structures. And then through town, what are the soils like? Would that influence the types of materials we might have to use and so forth for storm drains and the other measures? In addition, in town, it means locating the utilities and understanding where they are and what the depth of those utilities are and what's going to be involved in both trying to avoid and in some cases, certainly services and so forth will have to be relocated. So, that's important to moving to the next phase of engineering, which is the 1690 and 100% drive, design and then producing the construction documents. So, Chris Dusa, who will speak here in a little bit, the project manager and engineer that's focused on the in-town measures and is working with the property owners. He is meeting with them, met with many of them. And we're in the process now securing the rights of entry so that we can get in and do that utility locates and the survey work and the geotechnical work. So, that's important. If any of those folks are listening in, we strongly encourage you to get the right of entry and soon because that is critical to this next phase. So, with that, I'm going to go ahead. Soil testing for the flood retarding measures on forest. To test the soils and the bedrock there to see if it could support those flood retarding structures. And then through town, what are the soils like? Would that influence the types of materials we might have to use and so forth for storm drains and the other measures? In addition, in town, it means locating the utilities and understanding where they are and what the depth of those utilities are and what's going to be involved in both trying to avoid. And in some cases, certainly services and so forth will have to be relocated. So, that's important to moving to the next phase of engineering, which is the 1690 and 100% design and then producing the construction documents. So, Chris Dusa, who will speak here in a little bit, the project manager and engineer that's focused on the in-town measures and is working with the property owners. He is meeting with them, met with many of them. And we're in the process now securing the rights of entry so that we can get in and do that utility locates and the survey work and the geotechnical work. So, that's important. If any of those folks are listening in, we strongly encourage you to get the right of entry in soon because that is critical to this next phase. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Joe Leveridge, who's going to talk about the watershed improvements.
Good afternoon Chair and Board. I'm going to take you through just, Chris, Chris Dusa and I are going to tag team on this a little bit. We're going to take you through some of, an overview of what we've done, where we're at and where we're going with this, with the Tucson Drainage Master Plan. So, a little bit of background on this. Tucson, its physical location, it's at the confluence of four, four main washes. So you have the main Coconino Wash, which is a large watershed extending all the way back to Grandview Tower to the east. And then you have smaller tributaries named Water Tank, Middle Wash and Long Jim. Long Jim is the tributary that comes right past the Forest Service Office just north of, north of the town, that the Arizona Trail goes underneath through a box culvert. So that the town is located right at the confluence of these tributaries. And the sewer treatment plant is on the downstream end of that. What we did, we've, as we've approached understanding the most effective mitigation measures, we're trying to, we wanted to really dig into what can you do on forest and what can you do through the town? So, how do we attenuate flows as much as possible so that the mitigation that happens in town can be as effective as we can make it? So we looked, looked across the watershed, said physically, topographically, where can we put basins that would attenuate the flow? That we can reduce the amount of runoff entering the town of Tucson and have it enter at a more controlled rate? So we looked at, 12 main sites were considered. So we looked at how we decide, you know, some of these are, some of these are large, some of these are small, some of these are offline basins where water will spill into them only at the peak of the flood. Some of them are in line, so they catch all the water that's going through. Some of these leverage existing tanks that are in the watershed, especially along Coconino Wash and Long Jim Canyon as well. And so we took this, we ran these to ground and through that, we settled on five main locations that produce the most benefit for the biggest bang for the buck essentially, as you can get with these. And what we end up with are, there's three smaller basins that you can see on Long Jim, Middle Wash and Water Tank. These are, these are basins that are on these, the smaller tributaries that enter, enter the town. And we're able to provide some significant attenuation through these basins, which we'll get into shortly. Coconino Wash is the big, is the biggest contributor to volumetric flood. So if you have a large flood that has a lot of volume, it's likely coming out of Coconino Wash. And in order to attenuate that flow, you need very large basins. Like if you put in a, put in a very, a series of small basins, it really doesn't have that big of an effect. With a watershed like this, you get the most attenuation through large basins. So we located two flood retarding structures within the watershed. One of these is Tucson Pines, which is just up from, up from town. The FRS is a large embankment. It's basically damming the water up. And it's at a point where topographically, the canyon's kind of narrow. And then it widens out upstream of that and it's very, very flat. So you can provide a lot of volume. And it's low enough that it contains a lot of the tributary inflow that's coming into Coconino Wash. So you're catching the majority of the water coming from Coconino Wash. The second location, Echo Draw is up on 10X. So if you go out Road 302, you come to the meadow, which is where the 10X property is, the town-owned and the private-owned parcel. And it's really sited there. That meadow is really wide and really flat. So you can provide a lot of storage through building an embankment to store that water in the meadow for a period of time and meter it out slowly. So these are the, these are the five locations that we've looked at. And again, I'll get into it a little bit later, but the, the big picture is, is that we're able to take these, the 25-year event from Coconino Wash and bring it down to a scale that is then able to be conveyed through town for, with the infrastructure that's proposed. For Middle Wash, Water Tank, those both, we can take, we can reduce the 100-year discharge down to our storm drain capacity. And for all of these, the sewer treatment plant, we're able to contain the sewer, the flows with the 100-year flows within the sewer treatment plant. So these, these, good attenuation on forest, which leads then to significant mitigation that we can take through town. And with that, we'll pass it to Chris to talk about the town.
You know, before we get there, any questions from so far, what Joe has provided? And we'll go forward and I'm sure there may be some coming, so, good.
Good afternoon Chair and members of the Board. I'm Chris Dusa with CivilTech. It's a pleasure to be with you again today. So, a little bit more about the in-town improvements. I know the last time that we discussed the project, I believe we had showed you this slide. But with the in-town improvements, these would work in conjunction with those watershed improvements that Joe was talking about. And really, the level of mitigation or the effectiveness in terms of flood mitigation that these improvements within the town have is really highly dependent on what we're able to do within the watershed. Because we can only put improvements that are so large through the town. We're limited. Thank you. So we are limited with the slope from one side of the town to the other. And we're also limited by the existing utilities, in particular, the sanitary sewer system. It is a gravity system, so we would like to maintain that as a gravity system. We don't want to put things like inverted siphons in the storm, in a storm drain system or on the sanitary sewer. And if we can avoid things, you know, like lift stations, it makes the sanitary district and the sewer system much more expensive and higher maintenance cost for them. So we're really trying to avoid the sanitary sewer, leave it in place. So that limits really what we can do with the town. So with these improvements that we're proposing, we can convey about 1,000 CFS through the town. So, again, we looked at all kinds of different alignments going through town. We looked at open channels, we looked at storm drain systems. We even looked at if there was a way to bypass the town and bring things around over by the airport to the south of town. So, there were a lot of different alignments that we considered. We really settled on 11 and there were some variations, two variations on those, which gave us a total of the 22 concepts that you see there in red. So when it came down to the selection of the preferred alignment or preferred set of improvements through town, we looked at a selection criteria, a matrix.
Excuse me just a minute, Supervisor Fowler has a question.
Yes ma'am.
Can you show on, on the map, which you have up, just where, of course, Coconino being the, I understand she's asking a question? Would you mind showing us where those watersheds are? So, so everybody, everybody other than Supervisor Vasquez is oriented.
Map is facing north and you can see 64, it should be.
Yeah, so.
Think about it, you're driving into town.
You're welcome. Okay, you're welcome.
We all know where we are now, we think.
Yeah. So again, the selection criteria, these are the nine, the nine things that we focused on for the selection criteria and looking at these different alternatives. And some of the alternatives, you know, they kind of fell off and they didn't make it to the, to the final evaluation of those 22 or the, you know, the 11 that had the variations on there for various reasons. There were some where we were looking at, you know, boring through, you know, 40 or 60 feet of potential rock, those sorts of things. So those kind of fell off. So what we're looking at is the level of mitigation or, you know, how much water that we can convey through the town. The reduction in the flooding, the depth of the flooding. And really, you know, the next, the next four were really the separators. When we did the analysis of going through the matrix and looking at these different alignments, it was the total cost, the number of highway crossings is significant. It's very significant to ADOT. It is significant in terms of the cost. And it's also significant in terms of the disruption that we have to the local businesses there. So, you know, we do want to minimize those number of crossings. The number of parcels that are affected are important. We will need to get easements to construct these improvements through those, through those parcels. Critical facilities, the mitigation of critical facilities. You know, the big two that we're focused on, of course, is the highway, Highway 64 and the wastewater treatment plant. Coordination with other projects, you know, there's not a whole lot of other projects out there that we can coordinate with, but then, of course, there's, there's long-term O and M costs or operation and maintenance costs. So we had, we had a workshop back in July, on the 29th, that included representatives from the Flood Control District, our consulting team, the town engineer, the town manager, so representatives from the town. And it was a great process of going through the scoring matrix independently, you know, as a group, looking at these different alignments and then rating them or scoring them and then coming back, you know, to the end, summing up the scores and seeing which alternative bubbled to the top. So there were a total of seven alternatives, seven sets of improvements through town that we looked at. You saw those nine ranking categories and there was a possible score of 140 points combined with all the categories. And as you can see, it really wasn't that close between the first, second and third. You know, there was one alignment or one preferred set of improvements that really bubbled to the top by a long shot. So, and that was, that was of course, what we, what we term the 6B alignment. So I think you've, you've all seen this before. This was the original 6B concept, which again, we have three primary inlets to the proposed improvements. The one on the very north end of the town or the, or the top there is Middle Wash that goes through Camper Village. And that's a proposed storm drain, an underground storm drain. It's a six-foot diameter pipe. And then in the middle there, there's a dual-pipe alignment. And that's an arch pipe or it's, it's an equivalent of about a seven-and-a-half-foot round pipe. If you remember with the pipeline fire, some of the large pipes that went out there, those were 10-foot diameter pipes. So these are, these are about seven-and-a-half-foot equivalent diameter. And that's a dual-pipe alignment or two, two pipes going right next to each other. And then we have at, at Water Tank Wash, which is to the south of where Coconino comes in, another six-foot diameter pipe that would pick up the flow from there and then convey it down through town. All of those pipe alignments come to a confluence on the east side of the highway as the map shows and then makes its way down RP Drive towards the wastewater treatment plant. And then we have some channel improvements at the wastewater treatment plant. I'm going to show you one that's, that's revised now. It's been a little bit more refined with some conversations with some of the property owners. You can see at the top there, those, that dual alignment of the two pipes, which is our, our primary conveyance that would convey about 1,000 CFS. And then for Middle Wash and for Water Tank Wash, much smaller watersheds, Coconino Wash being about 60 square miles. These other watersheds being, you know, one or two square miles. So what we wind up with is that with those six-foot diameter pipes, which again are picking up the flows from the detention facilities that Joe discussed, discussed on those watershed, we can actually get to 100-year level of mitigation for those washes because they're a lot smaller, they're a lot smaller. Coconino Wash, not so much, it's a much larger watershed. So, but we can still get, as Joe mentioned, to a 25-year level of improvement, which is the criteria for ADOT for Highway 64. So, honestly, I didn't think that we would be able to get there with this project. But we are able to, you know, provide that 25-year level of mitigation or essentially dry up the town for a 25-year event. So you can see on our map, we've shifted the alignment a little bit, where now it really does come all the way down RP Drive as it connects to the highway. As we go down through RP Drive, again, we're going under the main sewer that comes into the wastewater treatment plant with those storm drain alignments. So, we would reconstruct the existing concrete channel that runs parallel to the wastewater treatment plant. It would sit in the same footprint, it's about 40 feet wide, the existing channel, but it's going to be much deeper because we're going underneath the sewer system. So we would also want to include some bridges, a bridge or box culverts under Long Jim Drive, that meadow area where all the water backs up under there. We could prevent some flooding that would occur for larger storm events to those structures that are on the upstream side of Long Jim Drive by opening that up, that crossing up. And by doing that in combination with the proposed concrete channel, again, for the wastewater treatment plant, even for Coconino Wash, we can get to 100-year level, level of mitigation, which this is one of our critical facilities that, that we're trying very hard to protect. So that's a very substantial improvement for the wastewater treatment plant. So with that, I think Joe, I'll turn it back over to you.
Alright, thanks Chris. This, what I'm going to do is take you through what, what does this really mean? When we say mitigation, well, I'll show you graphically what, what we're talking about. This, so if we, when we say it's mitigated, that means that essentially, the amount of water that's going through town with that given storm event is within a piece of infrastructure that we've put in the ground. So if you, if we've mitigated the 25-year event, that means the 25-year event is coming out of the forest and it can be fully contained within the new infrastructure that's going through the town. So, so there'd be no surface flow on the ground for that event. So, but on this picture, you see, you see three different aerial views on the left, existing Group A and Group B. And then you see cross-sections on the right, which text is a little small, but it says Highway 64, Meadow and Sewer Treatment, Sewer Plant Cross-Section. What this is showing is that these are the same color ramps that we've seen with other flood modeling out of pipeline and such. But it's, when you, you go from the blues are the shallowest, up to the purple is the deepest depth. And so for existing in a 25-year event, there's a lot of inundation in town. The, the event two years ago, the flood event that happened two years ago equates to about a watershed-wide 10-year event. And so, so what you're seeing here is a little bit greater extents than we saw on the ground during that event. So when you do Group A, what Group A is, is we tried to look at these basins with some variability about how they may get installed. Group A is the local basins, the small ones on Long Jim, Middle Wash and Water Tank and Tucson Pines, that big one within, right upstream of Tucson on Coconino Wash. Group B is when you have those. And then you add in Echo Basin, which is up on 10X, the big meadow detention basin. And so we wanted to see. And so we wanted to see what the variability is between having just those, those four basins that are distinctly important to town and when you add on that Echo Basin up at 10X. And what, what happens is for the 10, the 25-year event, you see that the town dries up from surface flow from these washes. Sewer treatment plant is mitigated from these washes. Once you start moving past that to a 50-year event, what you begin to see is that the capacity of the storm drain system for the Coconino Wash is now exceeded. So from middle, from middle wash and from water tank, those, those washes again, they contain the full flow, so they're mitigated. But from Coconino Wash, you're going to be seeing surface flow through town in conjunction with the storm drain flowing full at the same time. Those then converge down by the sewer treatment plant, and then you have a channel that goes along the sewer treatment plant that has full mitigation. So it's all contained in that channel so that the, the sewer treatment plant is, is dry for the 50-year event. And what's, what's good about this is even though you have the surface flow, it's significantly lower than it would have been had you not had the basins and the infrastructure in town. When you move to the 100-year event, again, like Chris said, you, you have, we have 100-year mitigation on the middle wash and water tank. Those, those can all fully dump into the storm drain. But when you, but you're going to have water on the ground. There's going to be surface flow for 100-year event that's, that's overtopping through the emergency spillways of the Tucion Pines basin and, and continuing down through town. Again, though, 100, 100-year mitigation on the sewer plant. An interesting point to realize with this is how all this stuff works together is the Tucion Pines basin is very large, 600-plus acre feet of water when it's full. What that means is that when it fills, it will drain for a long time, like days. And so the infrastructure downstream has to be designed so that it can handle that outflow from the basin for an extended period of time. So all these things, it's, you can't just do one without the other. All these things really play hand in hand with how they function and how they provide the mitigation through town. Because we, you know, for this, the peak of a flood event, you'll have surface water. But as the basin drains, we want that flow to be fully contained in the storm drain system for that long period of time. So with that, again, 25-year event mitigation through town across the highway, which, which is really good for ADOT, 100-year mitigation for middle wash and water tank and at the water treatment plant. And, you know, if you relate that back to the 2023 event, that was about a 10-year event, that, all of that water would have been contained within the storm drain system that we're proposing today. Next steps, these are the really critical ones. There's, like, like Lucinda mentioned, there's the feasibility, just topographically and hydrologically, what works. Now it's, can you actually build it? So from the geotechnical testing, the environmental permitting, the ADWR jurisdictional dam discussion that we have to, that we have to get into, the permitting through the Forest Service with, with the structures, there is a lot of feasibility left to do. But at least we know that these are, that we're going a good direction with hydrologically how these work. And with that, I will turn it back over to Lucinda.
Any questions before we move on? I, I mean, it's, it's amazing what you all have put piece together here. Please continue, Lucinda.
Thank you, thank you, Joe. So in terms of next steps, if you will recall, the town pursued and secured in Arizona a SMART grant to be able to conduct this drainage master plan. They secured about 2.4 million to, to be able to conduct this study and, and prepare the construction drawings, the entire, entire effort. With that is a requirement that the town apply for a federal transportation grant by September 2026. So I've been working with Kate Morley over at Metro Plan and talking to others about, you know, what is, what is the likelihood that we're going to see transportation, other transportation grants come forward? And as you discussed this morning relative to the state plan, your state advocacy plan, there's a lot of question about what may or may not come forward. So, but however, right now, there is a grant that is open. It's called the Federal Lands Access Program. Some of you will remember, certainly Director Fowler will remember that we've applied for that grant for, I think we've done three prior projects out in the Lake Mary area, two sections of Lake Mary Road and then Mormon Lake Loop Road. And then we also applied and secured a FLAP grant for Perkinsville Road, south of Williams. And so those are, you know, have been very successful. We've worked extremely well with Central Federal Lands on this program. So that grant is out right now. And we as the engineering, I'll say the engineering team and, and we as the district and the town have made a decision to apply for that grant now. And I'll say the primary driver for that is so that we can meet that requirement so that the town doesn't have to repay the grant to, to the, to ADOT or to the State Transportation Board so that, I'll say, we can check that box that they did make application. I think the application will be competitive, but certainly we have not been through, you know, the more extensive processes to really determine the conceptual feasibility of these projects. So, you know, it's kind of at the point it's at, but we believe it's important to at least move forward and the council endorse this as well, not formally, but informally at their meeting, that they understand the importance of being able to, I'll say, alleviate the town from that responsibility to repay the grant. So that's an important step. So we're, we've put a plan together to develop that grant application and get that submitted. There is no grant match required on that grant, although historically we have made matches, Public Works has in particular because it increases your competitiveness if you do. But there is no specific grant match required. And that decision to apply will come back to you, but I wanted you to be aware of that because this is a, it's obviously very important to the town. It'll be the town that's actually applying, but we would certainly be providing a letter of support would be the intent. I'm meeting with ADOT tomorrow to talk through this with ADOT. And we've had a preliminary discussion with the district engineer and I'm meeting with another key, key leader, leader at ADOT to discuss this further, but I'm hopeful that we'll be able to get at least a letter of support from ADOT as well. So to know that that's, that's an important process and, and that's an important grant. Unfortunately, FLAP typically only comes out every three years. So there's not a lot of, you know, that isn't one. We are hearing that they may release the Build and/or Rural Grant, so we don't know if that'll happen or not, but certainly both the Flood Control District and Public Works are keeping an eye on that and Metro Plan, of course, as well, what other grant opportunities may come forward. So, and then, of course, we're also monitoring what may come forward from FEMA for these types of grants, particularly flood mitigation, the FMA Flood Mitigation Assistance Grant would be one that could apply to this and other flood mitigation projects that come through the long-term planning process. So, so that, that's an important piece I wanted to share with you today. So with that, if, are there any questions for the team or myself? We're happy to answer those.
A comment to make, and, and of course, this, this may engender some comment in response, but, you know, basically in terms of the, the flood mitigation measures, there's really two types. First is the, you know, on Forest or US Forest Service, which we've talked about and, you know, what we can do in the watersheds themselves, which alone will reduce the flooding to the town. And of course, to really get it to the level that we want to see that mitigation, we also have the flood mitigation through the town. Both of these are incredibly expensive propositions. And so it really is going to rely heavily on the abilities to get federal grant money.
Absolutely.
And, and we might be able to get federal grant money for some, but not all, as we move forward on that. So, and we know that the town will be applying and there's, and I know the mayor is here and I'm, I'm sure you know that we have experienced this within our county before, and we will do whatever we can to assist the town of Tucion in the grant application process. And, you know, you've got some of the top experts here that have helped us in flood mitigation throughout Coconio County and some here in Greater Flagstaff. And we are no strangers to the process and no strangers to the grant application process. And of course, we've got Lucinda Andriani, who, who is an expert in the field in, in both. So, but just let you know, we're here and we know this could be a long proposition and it may be a proposition or, or a mitigation process, I should say, that occurs in stages and it is not done all at once. So, just my comments.
Yeah, I concur. I mean, this is not a one and done. This is a long-term effort that's going to take multiple funding sources, going to take funding from the district, it's going to take funding from the town to be able to match those federal grants in all likelihood and as well as at the state level, ADOT level funding. So it's, you know, it's, it's going to be a big, big endeavor.
Any other comments, questions, or we'll go forward? I guess go forward.
Okay, great. All righty.
Supervisor Fowler.
I'm just really happy to learn that there, thank you for all your work. This has been a long, many years of, I remember the first time we took a tour out there, we were actually surprised that there was flooding going on. This was years ago. And, and now we're at a point where with all of your, your work and a lot of teamwork with the, with the town, thank you mayor, and just going through this long process and being able to get to a point where we can apply for a grant, I think that's really amazing. And just your detailness of your, of your analysis and how you portray and how you explain it elementary-wise, I think it's really, really great job that you've all done and I really appreciate it. And I'm really happy that there is a grant that we can apply for. And I think all of those grants, we did get all the grants that we applied for.
Mm-hmm. They've been very successful with FLAP.
Doing a great job. So I just want to thank you all for your, for your work and your presentations, educating us on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes, thank you for, for the presentation and it's very gratifying to see the work that's been done. I remember the day of the floods, that was the day I got sworn in as Chair of the Board. First thing that's to our attention was the floods in Tucion. So I'm really pleased the fact that the Flood Control District has been able to partner with the different partners and the city, the town of Tucion to provide this, this opportunity for the community to help protect against future flooding. So good job, everyone. Thank you.
And I want to recognize, you know, the town because the town pursued this grant and the town took on this effort and they're carrying the cash flow for this whole process and everything. So, and certainly Sean's been great. Sean and Courtney have been assisting with managing, helping to manage some of the grant elements and so forth. But the heavy lift financially came and making the match and all of that came from the, from the town. So really appreciate that.
All right, I think we're ready to move forward.
All right. So the next piece here that we want to, so Lindsay, I think we have to bring the other presentation. There it is. Great, super. Thank you, Lindsay. So the second item today is, is related to the first, but they are very separate processes. And one is being solely pursued with the support of the town engineer, but being pursued by the district. And of course, the other, the drainage master plan is being pursued by the town with the support of the district. So, and this involves establishing a, a local flood plane or what we've historically called an administrative flood plane. We've kind of learned in this process that they've changed the language, many of the communities have, to local flood plane, which I think is good because it distinguishes itself because it's a separate process from a FEMA special flood hazard area or a FEMA flood plane. So we're trying to make that distinction. As you know, part of what's all prompted all of this was two things. One, the study done by Jay Fuller to identify what was the true flood risk in the Tucion area. And then second was the flood event we see in the photograph here, right? Both of those things. And which the flood event really was, you know, unfortunate and important to confirming the mapping and the flood, flood modeling that had been done. But it certainly demonstrated that there is a increased and significant flood risk to this area. And you want your local flood plane authority to reflect that risk. If it's not reflecting that risk, then as people develop properties, you're going to have a disconnect there. And you're, you could potentially be putting people and properties in a level of risk that it's our job to try to mitigate that risk and reduce that risk either through regulatory action like a local flood plane or through mitigation like through the drainage master plan. So with these, you know, increased flood flows, we've had a discussion about establishing a local flood plane to more accurately reflect this flood risk. And as I mentioned, the town engineer, Jack Moody, has been supportive of this effort because then it will align frankly, both the district and the town in pursuit of the communications that go on with developers. We regulate the flood plane, they regulate building. That's how it works in, in this incorporated community. So importantly to understand, so we're going to walk through today what this will look like. Important for the board to understand is what actually will come to you eventually. Today, there's no decision. This is informative, just to inform you about where we plan to go, is that we will come back to you on December 9th and provide to you, you know, the information. But in effect, what you're actually going to be approving is a modification to the flood, county flood plane ordinance. We have a county flood plane ordinance and that kind of lays out the rules and regulations relative to how the county manages flood planes. That's required by FEMA. This is, part of this is how we, you know, also maintain the National Flood Insurance Program. Now that isn't involved in a local flood plane. This will not affect flood insurance requirements whatsoever. But, but there is somewhat of a relationship here, right? In terms of more accurately, because the FEMA maps are very old and don't accurately reflect the flood risk.
That's the point, I think, that needs to be understood.
That's the key issue. They don't actually.
The current flood plane, FEMA flood plane does not reflect the risk, does not reflect the modeling, doesn't reflect the, the flood that occurred.
Right. And what we reflect, we, we call this the best available information, which is the current modeling. That was done to FEMA standards. So that's an important piece here too. So what the action that will actually come to you is, is to set up the ability for the district to establish local flood planes in the future, right? And then intent is that the first one that we will establish is one within Tucion. So this will So this will give, provide the authority to the district to be able to do that, establish these local floodplanes. This is a very common practice. There's local floodplanes here in Flagstaff, Sedona, Yavapai County. In fact, the model that ADWR suggested we use was from Cochise County. Many, many counties and communities that regulate their own floodplanes have local floodplanes. This is a typical step that many, many districts and and local communities take. So Director Fowler, did you have a question or comment? So in Munn's Park, we actually worked with FEMA to remap, right? I mean, they made it, they were, they are encouraging districts and communities to conduct the analyses and then to remap those. In this case, right now, the first step we want to take is to do a local floodplain.
And maybe explain why would we consider doing a local floodplain versus going and asking FEMA to redo their maps?
Well, most importantly, it will probably take us three to five years to get through the FEMA process. It took, I think we're at 13 years in Munn's Park. Now, there were complicating issues there with changes and and information that came out from USGS and other things that complicated that. But it's a very long process. And we know that there are the potential for development in the Tucson area is significant, frankly. And so if we don't establish this now, then we could be creating risks with future properties. And the Drainage Master Plan that's being developed is all based on the same modeling. So you don't want those two things working against each other, right? We want to be able to facilitate ultimately the mitigation and that's to the benefit of the property owners, too, because, you know, as we move forward mitigation, that will provide a development ability, more development opportunities for for these parcels. So Director, did you have a question? Okay, I'm sorry, I just thought maybe you, I thought you were, you had and I thought. No problem. And we'll have an opportunity to ask questions at the end. So so we believe it's important to reflect the risk accurately and to move forward with this process. Ian Sharp, who is a professional engineer with J. Fuller, he did all the very, very detailed modeling, again, following the FEMA standards, so that we are in a position to submit this to FEMA at at the right time. And he's going to go ahead and walk through some of the details of this. In terms of our communications with the community, we are sending out letters to each property owner. That's within both the existing FEMA floodplain and in the proposed local floodplain. Some properties overlap, some are distinct. And they're getting a letter that explains what will be occurring. They're getting three maps that show where the floodplain is proposed, excuse me, the local floodplain is proposed, where the FEMA is and where the overlay is. And then they're also getting a frequently asked questions piece to answer a lot of what we would expect the questions to be. And then we're also setting up, we've set up meetings with some of the key property owners and we're offering to provide meetings with other property owners as there is interest as well. So so there'll be a lot of communication. There will also be minimally a 30-day public notice process because this is an ordinance modification change amendment to the ordinance. So which will go out in like early, you know, November so that they'll also be receiving that public notice as well. So so with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Ian and he'll share, you know, what this will look like and some of the exhibits.
Should add, I meant to add that Ian has worked with J. Fuller for some time. He worked down in the Tucson area and did a lot of work with FEMA County on very similar local floodplanes and FEMA floodplain remapping and those types of things down there as well. So he's got a lot of experience with this process.
Yeah, thank you, Lucinda. So yeah, my name is Ian Sharp, civil engineer with J. Fuller. Been with J. Fuller for 20 years and most of my career has been this right here. So I did the analysis on this project for the county, for the Flood Control District. And we did the report, determined the various discharge rates for the 2-year through 500-year and did the flood inundation. I feel like no matter where I stand, I'm in the wrong spot here. So with that, I'm going to probably walk you through a lot of what Lucinda's already said, but I'll say it a little different and give you a little bit of different background. But what we have done, we did a lot of analysis and on this map I want to show with you guys, there's two floodplanes you see here, the the light blue cyan area, the smaller floodplain. That is that effective Zone A FEMA floodplain that's inaccurate. It's it's underwhelming, it really doesn't show the true flood risk. And the other floodplain, it's obviously much larger, but it's including not just the Coquenino Wash, but we're including the tributaries that come in from the different directions. And it's what we believe is truly showing the flood risk that approaches Tucson and impacts Tucson. So what I want to do is explain what the local floodplain is, how we arrived at it and what it means. So the the Zone A floodplain was probably delineated back in the 70s, 80s, somewhere in that area. And it would have been done on paper maps, it would have been done with some back-of-the-napkin calculations. And unfortunately, we just don't have those models. We don't know what the discharges were. We don't really have a lot of supporting data. So it's, you know, we often joke, it's basically a sharpie on a map. Somebody delineated what they think the floodplain is and we have to live with it. The other problem is, if you really look close at this, you'll see there's some shifts in the floodplain. And it basically what happened was in the early 2000s, there was a map modernization process where they took the paper maps and digitized them. There's a lot of errors with that. So they end up showing hill slopes that are flooded and valleys that are dry. And again, we have to live with that. So what we did for the district was we prepared modeling, hydrology and hydraulic modeling, floodplain inundation modeling that is FEMA quality. So basically, what we have today as a report is really close to being able to go to FEMA and say, FEMA, we believe the Zone A is wrong, here's what it really should be and here's why. And we could start that letter map revision process. As Lucinda stated, that's a long process, two to three, four years. And so in the interim, what you can do, or instead of a LOMAR, what you do is you do these local floodplanes. And so the area that we show in those, in that dark blue floodplain, that's the same floodplain that we'd go to FEMA with. So if this was to be remapped, it's the same floodplain. You're just recognizing it locally as the local community what it is. This is the same thing, we're just further upstream. This is in that 10x area and just showing the the different floodplanes. We don't need to spend a lot of time on that. So I'm going to shift gears just a little bit. You guys are all aware of the flood that happened, but I just want to give a couple of statistics on it. So that was a really strong event that happened in August of 2023. And what happened was there was about three and a half inches of rain that fell on the middle of the watershed. And then as you went out from the middle of the watershed, it was about a half an inch. So it was this distributed storm, but it wasn't uniform across the watershed. And that most intense part was about a 25-year event. So in six hours, they got about three and a half inches. So it was pretty intense, much less intense on the perimeter of it. And what it led to was the flooding that you see here that you're aware of and you've seen in the pictures. And the discharge that was recorded, so the town of Tucson has a flow gauge down at the wastewater treatment plant. And that treatment plant gauge recorded a flow depth of 1.4 feet deep. So, you know, you think about that, that's really not that deep. But at the velocity it was going and all that, we back calculated, it was a flow rate of 1,400 CFS, cubic feet per second. In our modeling, we have computed the 10-year flow rate is 940 CFS. The 25-year is 3,200. The 100-year is 10,000 CFS. So this is somewhere around a 10-year event. 1,400 CFS, what does that mean? You could fill an Olympic swimming pool in one minute with that. It's 630 fire hydrants flowing at the same time. It's a lot of water. And this is only, you know, somewhere between a 10 and 25 years. So the 100-year event's much, much greater. So this is the Zone A existing FEMA floodplain at the town area again. And what we did is we looked at who are the parcels that are currently in the floodplain, either partially or wholly, and how many structures are there? And so currently, there's 21 parcels and 49 permanent structures that are in the floodplain. And we're well aware that that's not accurate in that we saw that that flood from a couple of years ago was much stronger and much more inundation than just this. So we look at this map, this is what we're calling the local floodplain. We now would say that there's 54 parcels that are impacted by a floodplain and possibly 71 structures. So there's a lot more. And then this is really what I want to focus on. This is the combined, these are your two floodplanes. You have your Zone A and then you have what we're calling in the orange, the local floodplain. And so I've been working with John Carr and we've been looking at revising the ordinance for you guys, the floodplain regulations. And the way your regulations are currently written, they're primarily focused on FEMA Special Flood Hazard Areas. So that that is your jurisdiction, that's what you focus on. And the what we're looking at doing is revising, that's the language we've looked at, revising it to regulatory floodplanes. So regulatory floodplain will now be FEMA Special Flood Hazard Areas as well as local floodplanes. So they'll both be the thing that you regulate. So in this situation, those will both be collectively a regulatory floodplain, two different inundation areas, but one floodplain, if you will. We looked at all the different parcels that are impacted by this. And as Lucinda said, we're reaching out to the landowners collectively, meeting with them individually to explain, here's how you change the statuses, helping them understand how it impacts them. And two more slides. So the question that's asked, and Lucinda hit on this, is is flood insurance required? And the answer is no, it's definitely recommended. But because you're in a local floodplain, that doesn't mean you have to have flood insurance. There's no mechanism to force that upon you. There is a negative to that when you buy property that there's not an automatic trigger that tells you you're in a floodplain. So there's a little bit of education that needs to happen to help landowners know when they buy a parcel, they're in a floodplain. But the flood risks are there and so you definitely want to encourage flood insurance. And then, oops. What are the development implications? So the way it's being looked at now is if you're in a local floodplain, you're very much going to be treated just like you would be if you were in a FEMA Special Flood Hazard Area. It's going to be the same. Make sure you develop above the 100-year flood. Make sure you do a no adverse impact analysis, you're not adversely impacting your neighbors. And then if you are in a FEMA Zone A, yes, you'll still have to do the FEMA LOMAR-LOMAR. But if you're in the local floodplain, you will not need to do that process. Unless there's any questions for me, I'll pass it back to Lucinda.
So in effect, this really, you know, the the major impact here is on development, future development and what might be undertaken or not undertaken. And, you know, I'm hopeful that we can work with the property owners to address both the flood risks and and also continue to support development, right? So that will be our our goal. But this will give us the regulatory authority to be able to to do so and bring forth the accurate risk. I also want to share that with this process, of course, we're working with the district's attorney to be sure that, you know, we're going through the process of modifying the ordinance, you know, correctly. And so he's actually the one that's generating the change to the ordinance and and will, you know, will be the one that will ultimately approve what language goes to you, of course, draft it, and he'll be the one that will sign off on that before it comes to you. So no, we're working closely with John Gaylord, so on that effort, so.
If I can just make a comment, and I don't know if the mayor would also like to address this at all. She's certainly welcome to. And that one of the comments I would make is, you know, having been there and seen the flood that occurred and the level and the degree of flooding that closed Highway 64 and quite frankly stranded many of the young children that were going to school at Grand Canyon Unified School District because they literally could not get home. And they, I understand they had a party and so they seemed to be doing very well and weathered it quite well, but their parents didn't weather it nearly as well. So we know, we all know that the FEMA floodplain is not accurate. We all know that the FEMA floodplain does not reflect the risks that are there within this area. And so, you know, one of the things that we've all talked about is we have really a moral and ethical obligation to make sure that we have a floodplain that does in fact reflect the risk and reflect the conditions. So and, you know, may even be a legal requirement, but it certainly is something that morally and ethically are something that we, the board, need to do. And so when people do come and they do want to build, they are aware of what they're getting themselves into instead of these 1970 paper maps that are being referred to. So I really applaud, quite frankly, the the town of Tucson and our Flood Control District for really taking a look at this, taking it very seriously, getting everything together for us to review so that we can do our job as supervisors. So I want to thank you for that. And and Mayor, please join us.
Hello. Lauren DeVeil, 120 Shemily Lane in Tucson, Arizona. Thank you guys so much. I just really want to thank everybody for the process. I'm sorry that Tucson had a flood and I'm sorry that Flagstaff has had your fires and floods. But having gone through that, the expertise that you guys have and that your teams has, I can't imagine going through this just with our, just with our council and our engineers and all people, our people, I just can't imagine. I'm very glad that Coquigny County is in charge of our flood control because it has just been an amazing process to have that that team working together. And I cannot say enough about Lucinda, about Joe, about Ian, about Chris, just everybody. It's just been an amazing process. All of you guys, just thank you so much, you know? I'm sorry that we're here, but we're going to fix it. And when you look at those ridiculous maps, that's, you know, what we've been dealing with. And so it's a process that's going to get there. But I am really thankful that it's this team and these people that were taking a bite out of it and going to get it done. I don't think we could have a better team doing that. So thank you guys so much.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Any other comments, questions? And if not, we know this will be coming back to us. And thank you for the information and look forward to getting this done, quite frankly.
Thank you very much for your attention. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, members of the board, we need to resolve back as the Board of Supervisors. Do I have a motion? So move.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those who would like to resolve back as the Board of Supervisors, please signify by saying aye.
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 It is unanimous. We are now the Board of Supervisors and we are here for a discussion on changes. This is number 11. Presentation and discussion regarding changes to Parks and Recreation, department rules, the process that have been undertaken and the next steps. So we are so pleased to have our Parks and Recreation team with us. We so depend on them and their expertise. So at this point, County Manager, do you have any preliminary comments to make?
Thank you so much, Chair Horstman. Members of the board, yes, our Parks and Recreation team is here to present. Presenting today will be Liz Krug, our Assistant Director, to talk about our department rules, the processes that have been undertaken and the next steps. So really appreciate the work that Parks and Recreation puts into rules and procedures and managing our Parks and Recreation facilities and the department and how we interact with the public. And so as we go through our rules and procedures, I encourage all of us to think about how how these rules and procedures give us a basis to interact with the public and how this sets us up in order to do so appropriately. So thank you, Liz.
Well, thank you so much, Andy, and thank you, Chair and members of the board. And my name is Liz Krug, I'm the Assistant Director for Parks and Recreation. And today I'm joined with Cynthia Nemeth, Director of Parks and Recreation, and also Shayla Gunn, our Recreation Programs, Special Events and County Fair Manager. All right. And so today, as Andy mentioned, I'll go through a little bit of why we're doing this today, the review process we've undertaken, the proposed substantive changes, the feedback we received to date, the timeline and next steps, and then answer any questions you may have. And so I also just want to state that today's presentation is informational only. We are not requesting any action today, just wanted to make that clear. So why are we here today? Well, we are here because the county park rules systems, we needed a periodic review. The last time that we undertook this was a little more than 10 years ago. We want to be able to help guide our Parks and Recreation visitors, our partner operations. We want to be able to help guide our Parks and Recreation visitors, our partner operations, and really address any public safety issues. We also want to be able to address new park user behavior that we might be seeing in some of the parks, like overnight stay situations. And we also want to be able to address emerging trends like drones and e-bike use. So what rules have we evaluated and are proposing updates to? And if we think of this like a hierarchy, we have an overarching set of overall rules that address all the parks and natural areas and address all of the different areas within our parks. And then we also have some very specific amenity rules, like disc golf, the bike park, natural areas, trails, campgrounds, archery range, the amphitheaters, stables, special events, and Ramadas. And in the way of, I guess, substantive information, the overall rules and the special event rules are probably the most hefty in the context of page numbers. But certainly from our standpoint, all of these are very important, that we needed to address them. So again, what has been the review process to date? Well, we are really just only updating the language and the scope is necessary. And in some cases, the language was streamlined or even removed, but in more cases than not, we may have added more information to make it more clarifying. And we really began this process in earnest in winter 2024. We actually began it even a little bit earlier. Staff met about 15 times. The Parks and Recreation Commission reviewed all these proposed rules, changes at six meetings this past year. They posed some wonderful questions. We had discussion. They provided input. And overall, they recommended that the proposed changes be approved by the Board of Supervisors. Staff met with individual Board members, Board Supervisor members in August of this past year. And then after that, we did post online for public review in September 2025. We organized two public meetings in October, and there we invited the partners, special event producers, and the general public. And in your packet, you received a couple of documents. And I just wanted to do some highlights today in terms of what are the substantive changes that we're proposing. So for example, in the overall park rules, and I'm not going to read this verbatim, and I'll just kind of point out some of the ones, some ones on each of these. So for example, in the overall park rules, we felt it was important to provide better definitions of camping and day use areas. We added information about the non-refundable credit card fee to rental procedures, because we wanted to be very transparent about our process. We added information that the department reserves the right to temporarily or permanently close an area of the park or the entire park, and that during county emergencies or public safety events, that park or facilities may become unavailable for event or drop-in use. And I should also mention that for these proposed rule changes, our office, our department did consult with the county attorney's office and the county sheriff's office. So for example, those last two bullet points where we are proposing to add specific Arizona revised statute language, that's coming from the recommendation from them, for example. And the last bullet point about language, about vehicles being left unattended for 72 hours. Again, the special event rules, which are also very lengthy in the document in your packet, these again are just some highlights as to what are some of the proposed substantive changes. But we really, over the course of time, we were just hearing also from our special event producers, questions about, well, is my event required, what are the requirements for alcohol about my special event? So we really cleared up language about alcohol requirements, that section and which events this applies to. We wanted to update the language about fire restrictions and the ready, set, go process when it concerns special events. And this is one area that we actually removed several sections that were no longer applicable. And again, we updated refund charge information. When we added information about the county clerk to the alcohol requirements, in fact, this was already the process that we were using, but we wanted to make it clear to our special event producers, for example. And then this next slide, I'll just go over a few of these now. So for the natural areas, we wanted to clarify language about defacing, destroying, or injuring park property. For trails, we added proper trail etiquette language. There were no substantive changes that we're proposing for disc golf rules. In the stables, we added some information about how that during county emergencies, the stables may be unavailable. And I should say too, that sometimes we repeat the information in your packet. You'll see that sometimes, for example, some rules on the stables are repeats of the overall park rules, and it's because, in that case, we're posting on-site the stables rules, and we want people to clearly see some information. So sometimes they are repeated, the rules are repeated. And again, in the Ramada and day use rules, we added non-refundable credit card fee information and updated that refund charge information. And in the case of the bike park, we clarified which items or actions are prohibited, and we added emergency and non-emergency contact information. So what is the feedback we've heard to date? So so far, we've heard that really these rules updates are incorporating needed information into our process. And again, as I mentioned, the Parks and Recreation Commission recommended approval of these proposed updates to the Board of Supervisors. And we held those sessions, those meetings, where we invited specifically special event producers, our partners, and the general public. We had five people attend these meetings, and they really only asked clarification questions, but it was a great dialogue. So we really appreciated them attending and sharing that time with us, and we did not receive any feedback online. So what is that timeline and next steps? Well, this really just lays out all that I've mentioned before. We started the process last December. January through August of this past year, our Parks and Recreation Commission reviewed the materials and provided input. We held individual meetings in August with the Board of Supervisor members. September, we posted the information online and held two meetings and made available online public comment opportunities. The two meetings were held on October 1st and October 6th. I'm here today on the 21st, and I look to be back presenting to you on the 9th with a public hearing request, a request for approval on these proposed changes. And that wraps up my presentations. Are there any questions?
Liz, thank you so much. Really appreciate this. And I'm sorry there wasn't more feedback, you know? But on the same token, from taking a look at this, you know, and it says substantive changes, but a lot of them really aren't. Some of them it's kind of cleanup, and some of it's just kind of more explanation, some of it's, you know, common sense that you probably, people already thought applied. So, but having said that, I applaud you for the public outreach and the information, and appreciate you again coming back to us with the information. So I have no further questions. I think you've done a good job of meeting with us individually and also prepping us for this. So thank you. Other comments, questions, members of the board? Yes, Supervisor Antovere.
I'll just add that by meeting with us, you know, personally, that's where I really got to ask all the questions and really dig in. So I don't have anything today. So thank you.
Comments, questions? Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes, thank you for the presentation, and there's a lot to digest, but as you said, we've gone through already, and it looks good. And so thank you for all your hard work, and look forward to seeing them implemented.
All right. Boy, it's almost, I'm sorry, Supervisor Fowler here.
I just want to thank you for your work. I mean, this was a great undertaking, because it had to do with community power. And thank you to our Parks and Recreation Commission. They're all volunteers. They really do the review, everything. They know our parks and open space throughout the county so well. I just really appreciate their work. So give them our thanks from the board. And just, I know this has taken a long time. If you've met with us, you only mentioned you met with us once, but you meet with us frequently, so thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Supervisor Breguet.
Thank you, Liz, for the presentation. I think, you know, as we go along, we have to ensure that we go back to our policies or any kind of guiding principles that we have within our departments so that they're up to date. And so thank you so much for your supervisor and others here with you. I just want to say thank you. And I just, I always like to see updates coming, you know, like with our policy. I always ask demonstration, where, how are our policies and procedures, when were the last updated, things like that. So I just want to say thank you so much for being here today.
Thank you very much.
All right. Any other comments, questions? Otherwise, we'll move along, and thank you again for being here. As always, we love our county parks. All right, members of the board, we are moving on. Do we want to take a five-minute break, or are you all okay? We'll take a five-minute break, and we'll come back.
Madam Chair, members, thank you. But we have two items on federal, so.
[inaudible] 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 We're all back, we lost our staff. [inaudible] [inaudible] Lemon. Oh wow. Yeah.
Is that a permanent product? Yeah.
It would be. It would. So Evan was saying that that may be that resolution itself, the work base, they're trying to meet up some [inaudible]. All right, so, ready? We are back from our short break, and we are at the end of our agenda. And I'm going to turn this over to our County Manager, Lucinda, who is the area of the [inaudible].
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. While we did hear from Government Affairs this morning discussing our County Supervisors Association legislative priorities, we do have a couple of federal legislative items to discuss with you today. So without further ado, Keith Brekis will present those items.
We are back by popular demand. I don't know which one demanded us, but.
I don't know which one demanded us, but here we are. So.
I don't know if I didn't. Did anybody?
Was not by the demand of the chair. Okay. Mark that for the record. So, first, just, I did mention already earlier, the Rural Transportation Summit. We held that, was it last week at Sierra Vista? I won't say anything more about that because I think we already covered it, except that Flagstaff is hosting next year. And it will coincide with the 100th anniversary of Route 66 as well. So, it's kind of cool. There'll be a hosting here. So, it'll be easy for staff or board members to get to that one without having to do a lot of travel. Shutdown update I did send out from Bob and Anna, their little update, which wasn't super optimistic. They expected to drag on for a bit longer. So, we did want to recognize the board for taking proactive steps to protect some of the residents on the women's infants and children on the WIC program. I think that's an important move. And so, we'll acknowledge that. And the situation remains fluid. So, we'll see, we'll keep you updated as we get more information. But there are two legislative updates I have today. One, the Fix Our Forests Act was marked up in Senate today. And it did get approved. It did make it through the Senate Agriculture, Nutrition, and Forestry Committee on a bipartisan vote. The vote was 18 to 5. All the no votes were, I think, from Democrats that had some concerns about environmental. But I should note that a majority of the Democrats on that committee did vote for the bill as well. It does a few things. It accelerates forest health and wildfire preventive projects by streamlining approvals and reducing legal delays. It creates fire shed management areas on high-risk landscapes requiring targeted wildfire mitigation updated every five years. The area that was probably a sticking point for some of the members less familiar with forest issues was it does extend the NEPA categorical exclusions for forest management projects from 3,000 to 10,000 acres. So, you could get a categorical exclusion for a larger area. When we look at the scale of wildfires in the West, 10,000 acres isn't even that big of a footprint anymore. So, I think it's important to be able to treat areas that size. This would allow faster treatment of hazardous fuels, removal of dead or downed and diseased trees, and establishment of fire breaks on public lands mostly. The act would also enhance coordination between federal, state, county, tribal partners, as well as utility partners, recognizing the cross-boundary nature of wildfire threats. The bill now moves to the full Senate. If passed, it would head to a conference committee to reconcile the House and Senate versions before being sent to the President for his signature. And we expect that in this one, President Trump would likely sign it if it got to his desk. Any questions on that one before I get to the next federal issue?
Does that, does that mean they're back working in Washington?
So, the Senate is working. Yes, they are working. They had committee hearings. The House is not in session. They've only been in session, I think it's about an average of one day a week over the last, since July 4. I think they've been in session 20 days over the last 16 weeks. But the Senate staff, well, the staff in both the Senate and the House are working, and the U.S. Senators are actually working and having committee hearings this week. Any other questions on the Fix Our Forests Act?
Is there any, what, what role, if any, is the county taking in notifying our representatives where we stand on this? Or if we have some concerns within it, within the act itself?
We have, we have done some advocacy on it. I believe we've sent letters in support of it. NACO also is, is in support of it as a committee and through the public lands committees. And we've expressed our support to our congressmen and our senators. We don't have any significant concerns here. If they do mark it up in the reconciliation version, if the House and Senate make some changes there, we'll track those and make sure if there are big changes to environmental or stuff, we'll bring it before the board just to make sure we're still on board with it.
Thank you. Keep us informed. That's really important for us.
Absolutely. The other update I have is the FEMA Reform Bill update, the Fixing Emergency Management for Americans Act. The House version that passed out of the House Transportation and Infrastructure Committee on an overwhelming bipartisan vote, it was 57 to 3. Opposite of the last one I talked about. In this case, the three opposition votes came from the Republican side, from the right end of the caucus. But again, a majority of Republicans voted in support of the bill, a large majority. So, it represents a significant bipartisan effort to reform FEMA's disaster recovery system. The bill aims to modernize how federal disaster funds are delivered to counties, including presumably Coconino County. Some key reforms in the bill. It moves the Public Assistance Program from a reimbursement system to direct grants, which would presumably ease cash flow issues for local governments. FEMA often is pretty slow about getting things out, so this might streamline that process. This would also speed project approvals by allowing FEMA to approve smaller recovery projects faster. And in the case of Coconino County, from a FEMA standpoint, our projects are smaller projects because we're not talking about hurricane-sized landscapes. No worries. Yep. It's good multitasking. It would grant counties parity with states in procurement, simplifying emergency sourcing and reducing costs, streamlines paperwork, and supports coordination between rural and multi-jurisdictional areas. For us, where we face wildfires and post-wire flooding, these reforms could potentially lead to faster funding approvals, improved budget stability, more flexible purchasing during emergencies, and stronger resilience for rural counties like ours. The bill is now pending full House and Senate consideration. There's, of course, ongoing advocacy by NACO to ensure its passage. And Supervisor Fowler from Coconino County will be traveling to Washington, D.C. next week as part of the NACO Intergovernmental Task Force, which she serves on. And the FEMA Reform Act, I imagine, will be one of the things then NACO will be advocating there. So, our timing is really good to be there at this time. So, appreciate you going there and doing that. Any questions or concerns on that or comments?
Yeah, I'd like to hear from Supervisor Fowler on that.
Yes, thank you. You know, we, we wondered if this was going to be delayed or just basically canceled. But we received an email saying that this is a really good time to be there. So, we're going to still do a fly-in. And this is a task force that is members of county staff and officials from across the country working on disaster reform. And part of that is just to tell the administration that FEMA is, needs improvement, but we should not, we should not cancel or, or delete or dismantle FEMA. It's important. And we have a few recommendations on how it can be. And Coconino County, our staff, got to really commend them, have been very involved in providing talking points and other materials. Lucinda and Jay have been providing information and providing that and just being, being upfront there. And we're also, you know, having discussions on the homeowner's insurance in regards to these disasters. It's not just here that we're concerned about our homeowner's insurance increase. It's happening throughout the county or throughout the country, actually. And so, that's a big, really huge concern that we're trying to address. And so, that's why we're, we're flying in. And so, I'll be doing, we'll be doing hill visits again as well. Thank you.
Hopefully, somebody will be there and be back at work, huh?
Yeah, I guess the Senate side is in session. They're, they're there. So, we're going to be visiting the senators and the staff there.
Supervisor Ontiveros. Thank you. Would it be appropriate to ask, if you're dealing with the insurance issue on a national level, are you guys doing something there that we need to know about here locally?
Really, they're on, on the, at the national, with the task force, we're actually just trying to find out information, what is going on. So, what we're doing here with the education, with the presentations that are happening here, us learning and figuring out what to do, they're, from the national side, National Counties Association, they're just trying to learn what are the counties doing and where are the states? So, they're looking at all 50 states and all, all of the over 3,000 counties and trying to understand where they'll be able to make a difference. Since the insurance is really at the state level, we've got to really work with the state.
Thank you, Supervisor Fowler. And thank you for going back there. It's a difficult time to be back there. So, we really appreciate you doing that for us. Yeah.
And I should mention, previously Senator Sinema had served on the Senate Homeland Security Committee. We lost that, that voice or that connection. But fortunately, we do have a member of Arizona delegation in the House who's worked really hard on this issue. So, Congressman Greg Stanton, who's down in the Phoenix metro area, has been leading on FEMA reform. I'll give him a shout out. And also, he's, it's been a bipartisan effort because the other big sort of champion on this issue is Republican Doug Lamoff from California, who represents a forested district in Northern California and is, think is familiar with some of those similar issues that we experience here. So, those two have kept it moving.
Did send a letter to Representative Stanton in supporting his efforts and thanking him for his efforts on this bill.
Absolutely. Any other questions or comments on federal or state? If not, I will, I will now depart by popular demand. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Keith.
Thank, thank you, Chair Horstman, members of the board. And one key to being a good lobbyist is, is being able to read a room. So, thank you, Keith, for your, taking the opportunity to join us today. Next, we have the planning calendar, item number 13. I don't want to take a lot of time, but I think it's, because I know we have commitments this evening. So, Lindsay, do you mind pulling up the planning calendar?
Just growing and growing and growing.
I put my notes on one version only to be given an updated version, which is, which is good. That means we're busy. That means we are tracking and active. This evening is the Court Leadership Conference. Some of you may be attending. We have it posted for a quorum, 5 to 7 this evening at Little America Hotel. That will be a good opportunity for us to interact with our court partners. I assume court staff and our judges will be there as well. Also, this eve, also, at the Coconino Center for the Arts is tomorrow, Wednesday, Voices Unheard Breaking the Silence. We heard from folks this morning on one of our agenda items for community initiative funding. And I know Vice Chair Vasquez attended the event on Monday night as well. And then, we have the meet and greet for the Flagstaff City Manager Candidates on Wednesday evening, 5 to 7. And on Thursday of this week, the Flagstaff City Council, City Water Commission Work Session with the Bureau of Reclamation on the results from the regional water planning study. I will be attending that. And if you can attend, great. If not, I'll, I'll make sure to keep you posted on what the outcome of that may be.
Supervisor Fowler and I will be meeting for the Grand Canyon Trust on the 23rd, same day, same time. So, and we'll keep you informed on that. It's an update on their plans on economic development and just going forward with North Rim primarily.
Thank you, Chair Horstman. And then, also on Thursday, the 23rd Greater Flagstaff Chamber Event, 6 to 9:30 at Wiseman Aviation. I believe Supervisor Ron Taveros plans to attend that, if I remember correctly. Maybe not. I think, sorry to put you on the spot. Okay, maybe not. Okay, sorry Supervisor Ron Taveros. I think, I think somebody, Eric, Eric Peterson will be able to attend as well, I believe. There are a lot of different things happening on Thursday, the 23rd. And then, on the 25th and 26th, Saturday and Sunday, we heard from Teresa Munoz on Dia de los Muertos at the Museum of Northern Arizona. It's, it's always an amazing event. And then, of course, next week, the CSA Legislative Summit, Tuesday through Thursday of next week. A quorum posting for that, I believe, we're all going. And then, Friday through that, into November, the Page Balloon Regatta. November 4th, thanks, Lindsay, I couldn't see that. November 4th, state and federal legislative agenda. And then, a big topic on that is the Comprehensive Safety Action Plan and local raids, road safety plans by our county engineer Nate Reisner. And then, a presentation on biomass industry and update on forest restoration from both Jay Smith, our Forest Restoration Director, and John Saltin Stoller, Economic Development Director. Then, we get into November 5th, Wednesday, which is our Board Retreat, our Board Strategic Planning Retreat. And we're really looking forward to that and being able to get together and discuss our goals, strategies, priorities going forward. Also, on November 8th, we do have NAU Homecoming Tailgate. Please note, there is not a parade this year. So, we took the parade portion out of the working calendar. And welcome back, EP Squared. I felt so alone. I was going to ask Erica to do it this time.
It was really a lot of fun. I'm so disappointed that the.
Fun, then. But they have a, a big tailgate party that.
They do.
President is planning that we're all invited.
Yeah, it's a big one. Do we have tickets to the game, Lena?
I, I think I have that, yeah.
All right. Well, I don't know.
Who can have that, get that?
Then we have an alliance meeting on Friday, 7:30 AM. The Alliance is Community College. We'll know the results of the election at that point. So, and then, the Festival, Flagstaff Festival of Science fundraiser at the Viola Gardens on Saturday, November 15th. The 17th, then, that's a Monday, Joint City of Flagstaff and County Meeting. We will be presenting our Criminal Justice Coordinating Council Awards, as well as an update on the insurance crisis issue. We're actually asking Tom Torres to be at that meeting. Hopefully, we're working with our city partners to present on that. Lucinda's following up with Paul O'Trogi and Neil. And then, impact on tourism and sales revenues. Siri Malaney, our Chief Fiscal Officer, has been working on collecting those numbers, been tracking the revenues, how they're looking, particularly with the north, the fire on the North Rim, the dragon fire, and how is that impacting our local economies? And then, November 18th, we have canvassing the election. And then, state and federal follow-up items. And then, a public hearing and an action item potentially. And we have two and a half hours scheduled night meeting on the comprehensive plan. Any questions so far? Okay, to stop there or shall we keep going through the holidays?
No, I think we've got this. But I think we, we'll, we'll go ahead and talk about it further when we get closer to the holidays.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I tell you, this is just a moving target, it seems like. So, I want to thank Lindsay for keeping us up on this. So, thank you, Lindsay. And all the DDs, you're right. They're trying to keep all of our calendars together. So, absolutely. Thank you. All right. We are moving forward. Is there anything else? County manager? Is there anything else?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Nothing from the county manager today. We'll forego item number 14 on a bit on administrative matters. I think we covered many of our matters going forward on the CSA legislative agenda. We're looking forward to that opportunity next week.
And if anybody has any roundtable, otherwise, I would probably say, let's keep it very, very short. If you have some, I'm going to waive my roundtable comments and I'll save it for next time. Okay, all right. If, if there is anyone I would like to hear from, I know Supervisor Fowler was just at that NACO conference. Can you give us just a brief update on that?
So, I'm on a number of committees for the, at the National Counties Association. I'm on the National Counties Association Board of Directors. And we met in La Jolla, San Diego, California. And we met with our corporate sponsors and really just the conversation about the, the concern of the federal cuts and the federal rewording of certain programmed language that really have negative impact on counties, where counties are going to have to pick up the costs and/or else that our residents doing without. So, that, that, that was. So that, that, that was, that was a very, that is a concern. And the main focus on this particular meeting was on the disaster throughout the country and how, how counties, what they, counties relied on, on these major disasters like the grant that was, disaster loan grant that, that was canceled could have helped counties that just recently experienced some disasters. That, and how the conversation is going is how do we get those, how do we educate our congressional delegation? Our, how do we educate the current administration and Congress? How counties and the residents, communities benefit from these? And how the counties are the first responders? And that FEMA and just the conversation about county, community or the county emergency managers, how they rely on each other throughout the country? And that you, you shouldn't just give it to the states. So the states will become, come up with their own policies, their own regulations. So when one county emergency manager may go to another state, and the whole regulations will be different there. Right now, it's, it's common, you can just go and go to an event somewhere and you know what to do because the protocol is all the same. So that's something that the counties are very concerned about, as well as SNAP that is about to be cut. And it's really the, the language on the eligibility has changed. And with all the uncertainties that are happening and the, and the economy, the tariffs, it's really impacting individual families that are in need the most. And that's where the county services are focused is on people that have, a lot of times can't speak for themselves. It's the rural community, so there is a rural caucus fly-in because of that. There are more fly-ins with the National Counties Association this year than any other year ever. So, and it's just because of the concerns that are happening, these impacts are happening to our residents. Well, that's where it's at.
Thanks for the update. Thanks again for attending. Anything else anybody would like to discuss? Are we good to call it a day and move on to the reception this evening for the Court Leadership Conference? And I understand there's folks coming up from the Court of Appeals and Arizona Supreme Court and Superior Court. Is that correct? All right, good. Anybody else otherwise? We're adjourned. Thank you all. And again, staff, great job, really appreciate you.